Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene city council, etc. agency to Westminster redevelopment agency meeting right now, seven eleven P M Wednesday, November ten twenty twenty one. Go call please.
Mayor Ta.
Here.
Vice Baron.
Here.
Councilmember Doe.
I'm here.
Councilmember Ho.
Yeah.
And councilmember Monzo.
I'm here.
All members of the council present.
Thank you so much. I would have salute to the flag will be councilmember Menzo. Evocation will be city attorney. So please stand.
Please stand. Ready begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. By your heads. Heavenly Father, we commit this evening to you. We thank you once again for the opportunity to to come and do the city's business. We ask that you would grant the council wisdom and the public in its participation and staff as well. We ask that you'd enable us to do good things for the city. We just pray that we'd have the the grace from you to be able to conduct this in a way that is honoring. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, customer Menzo and city attorney. Next, we have expertise medication. Oh, next we have city attorney close second report.
Yes, there were three items on the closed session agenda, two potential litigation aspects. Those were both discussed by the council and direction was given also concerning the evaluation. There was also discussion on that as well. Nothing further to report.
Thank you so much. Next, expertise medication. See none. Next, we have city club report. Oh, I like to first like to welcome. We have a new inner room city clerk.
Hello. Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council. Currently, I just want to bring briefly to your attention. There was an item listed on the agenda as agenda item, excuse me, here. I apologize just a moment. Agenda item six point five. The way it was listed on the agenda was not completed the same way that it was described in the staff report. So it actually reads as consider submitting to the voters the question of whether the office. I'm sorry, the office of elected mayor should be eliminated and the number of council members and districts increased from four to five. And it is reflective as it was stated in the staff report. That concludes my item. And there were no late communications. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Robert Acosta, emergency services coordinator for the COVID nineteen update.
Good evening, Mayor Ta, council and staff. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I had a little red dot there. So as I was introduced, I'm Robert Acosta, your emergency services coordinator. And I will be providing COVID update. Tonight's update will be relatively brief as we are awaiting clarification on and on multiple anticipated guidance and mandates that are coming down from the various regulatory agencies. Recently, COVID in Orange County has seen an increase in all three key metrics that we use to assess the threat. The increase has been very has been very small, but it's been been pretty sustained over the past few weeks. Current conditions continue to be of concern and can best be described as substantial spread. Again, with if we were in the previous system, we'd still be in the red tier. This week, I was able to attend a webinar hosted by the League of California Cities and two epidemiologists spoke. And they both said that we should expect to have a mid-January surge. That's consistent with with the models that the CDC uses. The only discrepancy is if how how big a surge that is. Currently, Europe has seen a significant surge. Over the course of the pandemic, the U.S. has mirrored Europe's surges, typically with a few months delay. However, it's worth mentioning that the Orange County healthcare confident that our system is better prepared to handle surges as compared to last year. As I stated earlier, we're still awaiting guidance from OSHA on workplace mandates. A draft plan has circulated and is still being refined. And we're anticipating its release in the near future. Right now, our tentative implementation date is January fourth, but that's still in a whole pattern. At this time, we're still in terms of guidance and OSHA requirements and mandates. We're still on a status quo and just operating on those previous emergency temporary standards. Internally, I'm happy to report, we have no employees out due to COVID. This is due, in my opinion, at least partially in our employees' adherence to the basic precaution, wearing masks when they're in crowded situations and washing their hands and keeping socially distant. So that's something we should be proud of our workforce is that we're COVID free at this time, and we hope to stay that way. That's the end of my report. I know it's really brief, but we're waiting for that future guidance. And I'm open to any questions if you have any.
Thank you so much. Do we have any question for Mr. Costa? If not, I'd like to ask in a room. Vice Mayor, I think you have in internet connection issue. Okay, so next.
Vice Mayor.
Vice, Vice Mayor, I think you have like issue with connection. I cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
No, I think you have.
Not really.
Really difficult, yeah.
Yeah, we. Can you hear me now?
Can you say it again? Vice Mayor? Vice Mayor? Are you see one line? All right, so I'd like to ask in a room city manager to to introduce, we have a new chief of police who officially stopped working for the city Westminster, November first. Chief. Welcome to the city Westminster. We appreciate everything you done in your career. And we also have the new inner room city club. So I let the inner room city manager to introduce, please.
Yes, so because we have our redistricting public hearing that has started eight, this will be very brief. So I'd like to introduce tonight, we have Police Chief Darren Lanyer, who comes to us. He was previously the chief in Placentia. We're happy for him, happy to have him with us. And we also have interim city clerk Lucy Colombo, who was previously city clerk for Hawaiian Gardens and South Pasadena. We're also excited to have her on board as well. And then also on the call, we have interim community development director who started last week, Debbie Carita. She comes to us with she's she's come to us from a lot of cities. Most notably, she was assistant city manager in Anna as well as other city. And poor Vice Mayor, we still can't hear you. But so this is our this is our these are the new faces of our leadership team for the time being. So welcome to all three of them and we're excited to have them.
All right.
And I just have a couple of other things to add for my city. Report.
Yeah, but move on.
Okay.
Move on.
I'm moving on. Okay, so housing element, there is going to be virtual community meeting on Monday. It's going to be virtual Monday, November fifteenth, five thirty to six thirty. It'll be available. The link will be available on the website. And again, it's the housing element. So you know, come on and discuss about some of your priorities. So the review draft element is available online at City Hall Community Services or the Family Resource Center if you don't have the internet. Also, for Movember, Movember, so this is a this these nice blue fancy patches are being sold through the Police Association. Just contact Rachel Booth over in P D. She's got an email, but the phone number, seven one four five four eight three two one four. Best way to contact. And these are $10 each. They go to the the all funds go to the Movember Foundation. So right here, blue patch. That's it on events and things happening. So tonight, we have a very we have a very unique agenda. So redistricting public hearing starts at eight P M. We have an item on the agenda, which is six point five. That's for consideration of a appointed mayor versus directly elected mayor. So what staff is asking at this point to ensure that we start the public hearing at eight, we'd like the city council to move item six point five out of order to this point. But also, we'll take oral communications just on item six point five at this point. Public hearing, you know, there's a point there. There's a point within the public hearing for for comments during the public hearing. So that won't be affected. But then after the public hearings complete, then we'll go back to regular oral communications and the rest of the agenda. So I would just need a motion and a second from the council for that.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion and second to move item six point five forward. Am I right?
Yes, that's correct.
Go call vote, please.
Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Baron. Vice Baron.
Yes, yes, yes.
Councilmember Ramonzo.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
All right, so order communication. Oh, sorry, this is the any public comment regarding items, six point five, am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Let me just let me just say that for the record that what we're required to do is allow public comment before those action or discussion on an item. So what we're going to do is you've brought that item forward. We're going to allow discussion only on this one item. And and then we're going to have the eight o'clock hearing where there'll be opportunity to talk about that item before action is taken. And then we'll have the public comment, which will be related to anything else after that. So we're going to comply with the requirements here. So the first thing to start off with would be any public comment related to item six point five, which is the item related to placing an item on the ballot associated with the change from an elective mayor to a non-elected mayor and five council members with a rotational mayor and creating five districts. What you have are before you are three resolutions, one calling the election, one consolidating the election with the county's election in June, and then also a resolution setting priorities for written arguments. And then some instructions as to staff to proceed to prepare a map based on five districts, because that would be something that would be required. So with that said, I would encourage you to take public comment about that staff report, and then we can proceed. The let me just say, the reason we're doing it this way is that when we have the eight o'clock hearing related to the redistricting, it would be helpful to know if this item is placed or not. If it is placed, then it does affect whether or not we're going to also try and do a map that has five districts. So that's the reason. So if you could take public comment.
So now open for public comments.
Okay, so at this time, if anyone would like to speak on item six point five, please raise your hand.
Is there any way that the translator translate what is the item? Six point five.
Thank you. The interpreter will do that now. The point six point five of the day today is to talk about the mission of the city. The goal is to to help the city to protect the city. And also a proposal is to have five neighborhoods. So there will be five city officials.
Thank you. All right, so now I open for comments, please.
Okay, so our first speaker is Terry Rains.
Good evening, Terry Rains, Westminster. I had planned to incorporate my comments on item six point five into my testimony for the hearing item because it is directly related to my position about redistricting. I will go ahead and give that comment now, but I probably will repeat it during my testimony because I want it a part of the official record for the testimony for the public hearing. I implore you to vote yes on item six point five later tonight to place a measure on the June primary ballot and allow the voters to decide whether or not to eliminate the office of elective mayor and create five council districts versus four. I am in court, as I said, I am incorporating my comments on that item into my public hearing testimony because it directly relates to redistricting and therefore must be allowed. Why should voters eliminate the elective mayor office? One, to de-politicize the office of mayor. Two, to prevent one person from gaining too much power, resulting in the dictator-like corrupt leadership like we have now. Three, only two mayors in twenty one years is crazy. Four, to give us five council districts versus four for more diverse and equal representation from the top down. Six, I'm sorry, five constituents in each district would likely see their council member serve as mayor for at least one year. Six, the mayor serves on and represents the city on outside boards and commissions that need to rotate as well. Seven, to ensure the mayor has city council experience before becoming mayor. Eight, to introduce fresh new ideas each year. Nine, to ensure city staff treat each council member with equal respect. And ten, Mayor Ta has blatantly not represented us all for almost nine years now, and we are so done with him. Now, as far as the actual ballot measure, you know, I reviewed it. I understand it. I would suggest that the city, perhaps if it's passed or whether you have to do it ahead of time, I'm not sure. But I think we should set policy that should this pass, we should set policy as to how we will start the rotational mayor process. Typically, in other cities, it starts, the rotation starts by seniority. So that would mean that the mayor, who would no longer be the mayor in November twenty twenty two, then a new mayor would be selected, and it would go at least to start. It would start with the person with the most seniority on the council at that time. But we don't know who's going to be on the council at that time because we've got two recalls going, and we've got an election coming up in November. So but I'm not sure if that has to be ironed out prior to the ballot measure or whether that's something that administratively can be done if and when the major does pass. I also would suggest that the city or maybe the community get accurate information out to the Vietnamese community about this item, in particular, what it means and what it does not mean. There's been a lot of misinformation in the Vietnamese community about this item and others. And it's that it's a personal attack on Mayor Ta, et cetera, et cetera. No, this is something I have championed for since I moved here, and it is something that is badly needed in our city. And I think history speaks for itself, and I will be fully supporting this measure, and I will be publicly supporting it, you know, outwardly in the media, et cetera. So thank you for your time. And again, you may hear some of this repeated during my testimony. It must be permitted because it is tied directly to redistricting five versus four districts. Thank you so much.
Okay, our next speaker is Camilla.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. I'll make this quick. I apparently I must have missed that we were going to be doing this. I know that you guys did just vote on it. However, it would have been nice for the public to know that beforehand so that we could have prepared accordingly. However, very quickly, I will just say that I do believe that the council should vote in favor to put this on the ballot for the voters to decide regarding rotational versus elected mayor. I am in strong support of a rotational mayor for the very same reasons that Terry's just described so eloquently to all of you. And with that, can we be better about making sure that agendas are put out properly or at least the public is notified that things like this are going to happen? Because I have comments to make about other things, but now, since you've changed it, I'm not sure I'll actually be able to be present to do so. So if we could work on fixing that, that'd be great. Thanks.
I have no additional speakers.
All right, with that, I'd like to close public comment on this item. Then six point five, consider submitting to the voter of the Western, whether the office of elected mayor to rotational mayor.
Mayor, if I could add one thing, and that is on the attached as an exhibit to the resolution calling the election is an ordinance, which does amend the section. So if it's approved, it would be approved by the vote of the people, not the council. But you you would simply be what you're voting on tonight is to place the measure on the June seventh ballot. There is an ordinance that's attached that amends chapter two point zero four. And basically, what was done there was to just go through and eliminate the references to elective mayor and to clarify all the issues that would need to be clarified in that chapter. And so that's what the intent is on the accomplishment of that ordinance. And so, yes, to answer, I think, one of the speakers, Ms. Rains, she had a question. Right now, the way it's worded in there, I added a section for a rotational mayor, which is decided based upon majority vote, which is typical in cities, but they often go based on seniority. But that is something that's usually discretionary. It's not like mandatory. But they could implement a system like that under the way it's written. And then just terms of office and then changing sections dealing with the creation of a fifth district rather than four and at large mayor. Again, there's no decision made. This is merely a decision at this point to place them of a measure on the ballot. I do need to point out another thing, and that is there's some unique issues with this because if it's placed on the June seventh ballot, that's when the 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 election to be consolidated with the county is going to occur. Normally, the the county has thirty days to certify that election. And so thirty days from the seventh would fall on July seventh. And one of the questions we've been asking ourselves at a staff level is, is that election going to get certified in time for the council to get a map adopted properly in? Because if this is approved, then we cannot operate off of the current map that we have, the current map that we're going to be discussing. We would need to adopt a five district map. And so that's part of the discussion we'll have in the next item about doing a five district map as a secondary optional map if this measure was placed and if this measure is approved. But I just need to let the council know that according to the county, we would need to have the map to them on the twenty ninth day after the election, so not the thirtieth day. So the the county is saying to us, it's possible that the election will be certified earlier than thirty days. And if it is, then they'll let us know. But if it isn't, and it goes to thirty days, then we have a bit of a I just want to be full disclosure on that. We have a bit of a situation there where they're saying legally, we need to have that map adopted by the twenty ninth day. And they're saying they legally have thirty days to certify it. So it seems to me that there's a good chance that this will would work out. But I'm in full disclosure, I want to point that issue out to you. I've discussed it with the interim city clerk and with the interim city manager. They're aware of it as well. But full disclosures to the council, it may be a situation where we have to go to court to get clarification from the court on what to do. So if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, is there any question from other council member?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. City attorney, how confident is the county about being able to get it done in time?
Well, according to them, based on their history of of June primaries, they usually get it done quicker. But you cannot, they cannot guarantee it, nor will they. Yeah. Because there could be challenges or there could be other issues that require them to take the full thirty days, but they have to have it done within thirty. And if that looks like that's what's going to happen, then we'll have to think if there's ways that we could adopt the ordinance early or try to come up with a strategy to get a map in place. But I just wanted to be full disclosure on that. We've been trying to figure out the only other option would be to try to hold the election earlier. But this is a much more ideal time to to do it because it is the primary. And and right now, we don't have an earlier election, so.
All right, thank you.
All right, is there any other comment from a council member?
Let me ask you this. Okay, if let's say there's some unexpected election that happened earlier, can we attest that to that election?
Yeah, that would be something I would explore if if that if there is such a thing, then I could I could certainly look into that. That's a possibility. It depends on what kind of election and and the amount of time that an item has to be placed before it's on. Okay, so could you do a kind of contention plan to see if the if that's the case, then you know, how how are we going to do that? Thank you.
All right, any any other comments?
Can you hear me?
Vice Mayor, I think you still have connection.
Really slowly.
Very slow, yeah.
Very.
I think you have your connection issue. Yeah. All right, any any other comments? So now it's up to the council.
Move to approve.
A second.
All right, we have the motion and second to prove this item. Go call vote, please.
That was them.
Yeah. And just for purposes of the agenda, we do have the three resolutions which we reapproved, but also the fourth item, which is to authorize city staff to proceed with any legally required actions determined to be necessary to prepare an alternate five district map to be adopted by the city council in the event the ballot measure is approved by the electorate at the June seventh election. Such actions shall include but not be limited to holding any required public hearings or other actions determined to be necessary so that a five district map can be properly approved and in place so that it applies to the November eighth twenty twenty two city council elections. Again, this is just to prep everything so that we could try to make it applicable as best we can with the with the same issues that I mentioned previously as a potential pickup. So but that's part of the motion.
All right.
Okay, so that was a motion made by council members.
Wait, wait a minute. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. I don't know what happened, but you know, for the whole section, two hours, there is no problem. And then when we opened the open section and I guess there's too many people come in and so that the internet, so I apologize for that. Before we vote, can I have a few questions for the staff? First of all, if we move forward today, then do we need to have a special election for this one? In order for us to meet with, you know, the November election?
Any attorney? Any response?
This would technically qualify as a special election, but we would be consolidating it with the statewide primary election, which is on June 7th. So in a sense, yes, it's a special election. There are costs associated with it, but it's less when you consolidate with the election like this than it would be if we were to call one completely independent.
So there's a risk for going with the June 7 election, the primary election, there might be not enough time for us to move forward. Am I correct?
At this juncture, yes, there's what the county has told us is that they need to have a map in hand by election date, which is November 8th minus 125, which falls on July 6th.
But if we
held on June 7th and they have 30 days to certify that June 7th election, which falls on July 7th. So so it's possible that we won't get the certification in time. And so I just want to disclose that.
Also that I, I believe that that's very close to the opening for the next election for the candidate to turn in their, their application, correct?
Yes, that was my concern.
So what date is, what date is opening for for the next election for, for candidates to turn in?
We did research that as well, and I believe it's July 18th. We need to have everything published. So we believe we could hit that as long as we had a map in place and talking with the interim city clerk. We think we could have everything published prior to that July 18th deadline, at least I believe so. I'll let them speak for themselves, but we have to publish, make certain publications prior to July 8th, July 18th. And it would have to be in certain languages and then that would be the opening of the the running for those seats, so.
Okay.
To the court, yeah. For that.
If we consider to go with special election, then is there, how much is the cost for the special election if we do this?
I want to say it's $130,000. Lucy's going to look for the estimate because we do have an estimate and it might actually be in the report too. But a special election consolidated does cost more than a general election. Is that cost?
So the cost as listed in the staff report, page 2 of 3 on your staff report is anywhere between 128,000 to up to 188,000. But again, these are estimates. We won't know and it'll depend on how many other agencies may also consolidate and that would split the cost a little bit. But if it's just us, you know, it'll be probably up in the higher amounts. And that'll include other items like publication, rushing those publications. So there may be other additional incidental expenses related to the cost of the total election.
At the same time, we have to conduct hearing for District 4 and District 5 in parallel in order for us to shoot for that timeframe, right? Because normally wait until the voters voted yes to go with the five district before we move on to divide it into five district. And now because we don't have the time, we fight with the time, we are trying to move out before, even before the voters actually agree on agree to put on the five district. So basically, we are doing something that the voters are not approved yet. Am I correct?
Yes, it is not approved by the voters at this point. The decision tonight is to put the item on. And if the measure were to pass, then you would be in a situation where you need to adopt a map. We can't adopt a map just straight up. We have to have four hearings. So if we were going to do it this way, we would need to hold the four hearings now. And, and the proposal would be in the next item to basically bifurcate that, hold a part of the hearing to conduct a four district map, the way it currently is with an at-large mayor. And then hold a separate part of the hearing where we would discuss the idea of a five district map, basically to hold four hearings on that as well at the same time. So that there, there would be a map that would have been properly vetted and ready to be adopted if the voters in June elected to eliminate the office of elected mayor.
I may not have a problem, you know, I may go for like, you know, for the five district, you know, but at the same, at this point here, I feel like can somebody, staff or council members, can, can anybody tell me why, why we have to rush into this? When we know that we are facing with the timeframe that, that you know, is not in our favor? Can anybody tell us why we have to rush into this now? It seems like I'm hearing none. Can you hear me or I'm disconnected?
We're all hearing you, but I didn't see any response, so I don't know.
All right, I rest my case then.
All right, so we have a motion, a second for this item. Roll call.
That was a motion made by council member Doe and a second from council member Monzo, and that was to adopt a resolution entitled a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, calling for the holding of a special municipal election to be held on June 7, 2022, and ordering that a proposed ordinance be submitted to the voters of the city to eliminate the office of elected mayor. And to adopt a resolution entitled a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, requesting the board of supervisors of the county of Orange to consolidate a special municipal election to be held on June 7, 2022 with the statewide primary election. To, and to adopt a resolution entitled a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, setting priorities for filings or in arguments related relating to a measure to adopt an ordinance to eliminate the office of elected mayor and increase the number of council members in districts from four to five and directing the city attorney to prepare an to prepare an impartial analysis for the measure and authorize city staff to proceed with any legal required actions determined to be necessary to prepare an alternate five district map to be adopted by the city council in the event of in the event the ballot measure is approved by the electorate at the June 7, 2022 election. Such actions shall include but not be limited to holding any required public hearings and other actions determined to be necessary so that a five district map can be properly approved in place so that it applies to the November 8, 2022 city council elections. So roll call, be council member Doe.
Yes.
Council member Ho.
Yes.
Council member Monzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
No.
And Mayor Tao.
No.
That motion carried 3 to 2 with Vice Mayor Nguyen and Mayor Tao voting no.
So right now, I think we need to have a public hearing. City manager, am I right?
It's, we're still a little early. We've got about 10 minutes, so at this time.
So go back to auto communication?
Yeah, you can go back to our communication.
So I go back to auto communication, yeah. Open auto communication, yes.
So this is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the city council regarding any items on the agenda or non-agenda items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction. So at this time, I'll be reading any ecomments received as well as allowing members of the public to speak for a total of five minutes. So at this time, if anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand and when I call your name, I will allow you to speak. Thank you. Okay, so I did not receive any ecomments. However, I did receive a couple of requests to speak in advance. At this time, I'll be calling their names, followed by the list of attendees. So the first speaker is for Hung Nguyen. Hung, if you could please raise your hand.
Okay.
John Anderson. Okay, and Dao Tran. Okay, so then our
There we go.
So this is Dao Tran.
Hello, you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. Here I am again after two weeks of depression, after watching two videos of the October I'm sorry, of the October 27 council meeting and the October 24 meeting for the pleasure of the councilwoman who's Quang Chi Monument Committee. First of all, the October 27 council meeting video went viral to the world as fast as COVID-19. Because councilmember Ho used the Vietnamese very low class barbaric language, language of the gangsters to attack Vice Mayor Nguyen in the council meeting in this free country USA. Councilmember Ho, why were you out of control? Is it not because the city was discussing the nepotism that not allow councilmembers having relatives working in the city, which leads to conflict of interest? Was that because Mr. Vice Mayor asked who the planning commissioner is that hit to your nerves? Because that commissioner is your own son? Miss Ho, you have no shame. Because if you do, you would withdraw your son yourself, not wait until someone bringing it up and then make you angry. Now, the Vietnamese in the whole world know who you are, what you are, and how you are. Another issue in that meeting was you three, Ho, Doe and Manzo made the decision to remove the mayor's office out of the city hall without planning another office for him. You three made a record of shame because this is the first time in the war history the mayor doesn't have an office. This office has been there for 64 years with 19 mayors. You three just ruins the city's tradition. Do you understand that? What kind of elected officials are you? You just acted out of jealousy and hatred without thinking of your constituents' benefit and the face of the city. The second one. Now I want to talk about the meeting on October 24, when the Quang Chi Monument Committee did the pledge. In the oral communication, Ms. Camilla Overback had to speak that I applaud her in, for her opinions, which I totally, totally agree with. I hope she hears me tonight. Miss Overback accused councilmember of councilmember Ho of using taxpayers to pay for the utility bill for this kind of meeting for being of being favoritism of being hypo, hypocrite of performative tears. Miss Ho, you stated that the monument wouldn't cause payers, taxpayers dying. I learned that this meeting only, I mean the meeting on October 27, cost the city $1,400. Am I right? Miss Ho, put your thinking gap on and do the math. How many dimes are there in $1,400? You are a big liar, Miss Ho. As a Vietnamese, I feel shame that Miss Ho used the taxpayers' money for this monument. And I know the Vietnamese community feels the same.
Your time is up, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so right now we have less than three minutes. Should we start a public hearing first?
Can't really start it till 8:00, so.
Okay, so I, I think that less than three minutes, so it's up to start, okay?
Um, at this, you know, at this point, if, I know we didn't get a chance to really introduce, you know, if you wanted our new interims and our new police chief to say a few words, now would be a time, good time.
Okay, so we have a new chief of police and he had two minutes, right?
Sure.
Okay. Please.
If our police chief Darren wants to say anything. Or our interim city clerk Lucy, if she'd like to say anything too.
Chief, are you still online?
Think so.
Hi, honorable mayor and members of the city council. I'm excited to be here and help as the interim city clerk. I look forward to working with each and every one of you and help as best I can. Thank you, and I look forward to future meetings.
All right, so we still have, oh, there we go. Hi, chief, please.
Chief, they were gonna just ask you to introduce yourself as opportunity now to please introduce yourself, yeah.
Well, good evening, mayor, council. It's a privilege to be here representing the, the men and women of the Westminster Police Department and to work with you and the, and the community. Thank you very much.
And then we also have, again, interim community development director Debbie Crida.
Good evening, mayor and council members. It's my pleasure to be part of the team. I look forward to working with you from now and into the future for the period that I'm the interim director.
All right, so we have less than 30 seconds then. So I let the interim city manager do whatever with 30 seconds.
I'll take the 30 seconds to welcome all three of you and thank you for you know, helping us out in this time and need as interims, clerk and director and welcome chief. Can't wait to meet you in person. I hear a lot of good things about you from the folks in Placencia. So welcome aboard and we're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Guess we have like less than, oh, eight clock. All right, so item 4.1, open public hearing, public hearing and receive input from the committee regarding the redistricting process. Interim city manager, please.
So yes, as you know, every 10 years after the census, we have to go through a redistricting process. So I have a couple of guests tonight who will be presenting the item. First, we have Deputy City Attorney Kimberly Hall Barlow with Jones and Mayor. She helped us when we had to go into districts less than two years ago. And also we have the demographer, Justin Levitt from National Demographics Corporation, who also was on our team when we had to go through districting in 2019. So I will pass it on to, to our two guests.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I will begin and then I will turn it over to Mr. Levitt, Dr. Levitt. I apologize. As you know, after the decennial census, we are required to redistrict. And that requires that we take a look at the census data, determine whether we need to adjust district lines based upon population and demographic changes. We have a new set of state statutes to deal with that are laid out in your agenda report that require us to take certain criteria into account. The census changes will be detailed by Dr. Levitt. But in essence, we are looking at a process whereby we go through a number of public hearings and community meetings to take input on communities of interest, which should be somewhat familiar since we did this just very recently. And we will be seeking input from the public before we provide maps to the council for consideration. And then we will be looking at some mandatory criteria, including the compactness of districts, the geographical contiguity of those districts, the similarity in terms of communities of interest, and of course, equal population, which is the primary criteria that we'll be considering. So at this point, unless you have questions for me, I'd like to ask Dr. Levitt to give you a more detailed discussion of what we, what we will be doing, what we will be doing in the next few weeks.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Ta, members of the council, and thank you to city deputy city attorney Barlow for the introduction. I have a short presentation to basically go over some of the criteria factor demographics and give us a preview of what will be coming up over the next few weeks and months as we look through the redistricting process. Just as kind of a basic reminder, we do have to look at our city council districts once every ten years following the redistricting or following the census to make sure that they still comply with federal and state requirements. One of the biggest changes between the districting process and our redistricting process is actually a new state law. The Fair Maps Act of nineteen, of two thousand and nineteen has set up a new set of criteria that are now rank ordered in terms of their priority. And so a lot of the differences between the districting and redistricting process are actually because of changes in state law and intervening two or three years. So we still have to comply with federal requirements. So districts have to be substantively equal in terms of their total population. That's, we were waiting for that census twenty twenty population count. This, this population count was not received until late September because once the, once the census provided that number, the state had to then do a adjustment based on the prisoner population. And that was not available until the end of September. That sort of kickstarted a lot of cities, including Westminster, getting the process up and running. It does compress our timeframe, however. Districts have to be adopted by April seventeenth in order to be used in the November election. And so we're really working under that timeframe, about six months shorter than we otherwise would have. In addition to equal population, we have to respect the Federal Voting Rights Act. While race cannot be the only factor or the predominant factor, it must be one of protected class communities, must be taken into account as we look at the different district maps, particularly the criteria that we need to consider according to the state law. The middle column is where things have changed the most. New state laws require that we take into account criteria in a rank ordered way. So we have to consider the following criteria in this order. The first, contiguity, the districts have to touch each other. So essentially, they have to be one solid area. You can't have a little bit of a district that's not connected physically, either via land or some sort of thing like a ferryway to the remainder of the district. Undivided neighborhoods and communities of interest, the second. I'm going to talk more about this in the next couple of slides, but in general, we're talking about socio-economic, geographic, and demographic areas that need to be kept together for the purpose of their effective and fair representation. That, that's the text of the state law. Three, easily identifiable boundaries, as the state law states, to make sure that it's easy for people to understand which council district they live in. So to the extent that we can follow major roads, other natural and man-made boundaries, such as school districts or other jurisdictional boundaries, we need to do so. And then fourth, compactness, not bypassing one group of people to get a more distant group of people. However, as I mentioned, they are rank ordered. So if a community, for example, is not compact, we must keep that community together first before we care about compactness. It's also explicitly prohibited in the Fair Maps Act to take into account partisanship, such as registration and voting patterns. So political party and partisanship are not part of our dataset that we can use. It cannot be part of the factors considered. And then finally, on the third column, other traditional districting principles are various principles that courts have recognized as being valid. We can think of them as being sort of the final criteria, once we've down to a map or two that do equally well at representing the community under the California Fair Maps Act. We could look at other traditional districting principles, like minimizing the voter shifted from one election year to another, so that if a voter was expecting to elect for city council in twenty twenty-two, they're not unnecessarily delayed until twenty twenty-four. Or respecting the voter's choices, the idea that the voters of the city have elected a council and that it should not be up to the stroke of a pen on a map to remove someone from office. Or future population growth, if we know that areas are likely to grow more than others, we can certainly take that into consideration, although within the bounds of equal population. Now, what does this all mean for, okay, so let me just talk a little bit more about communities of interest and neighborhoods. So the Fair Maps Act talks about both neighborhoods and communities of interest as two distinct concepts. Neighborhoods are areas that have clearly defined or at least commonly defined geographic boundaries, such as major, such as areas bounded by major roads, by canals or other waterways, the areas that send their kids to a particular school, like attendance areas or school districts or other jurisdictional boundaries, or the areas adjacent to neighborhood landmarks, perhaps defined by specific plan areas, historic areas, or simply through subdivisions like homeowners associations, condominium and apartment complexes, and so forth. They are, they are sort of the Legos, the building blocks of districts. And when we start to put neighborhoods together is when we get to communities of interest. Communities of interest are those neighborhoods that have shared issues, characteristics, problems, economic, social interests, or similar cultural importance, or landmarks of cultural importance. Geographic areas are, sorry, communities of interest are fuzzy, unlike neighborhoods. People may disagree on exactly where the boundaries of communities of interest are, while neighborhoods, you can verify using a planning map or something along those lines. We can think of them as, you know, districts. I'm going to think of districts as collections of communities of interest, that are kind of put together based on their shared issues and characteristics. This law specifically asks us to think about these areas of shared demographic similarity or issues or cultural, or areas of cultural importance that benefit from being included within a single district for the purpose of their effective and fair representation. And it may be the case that some communities are so large that they need to be divided over two districts. It may be the case that a community is only a small part of a district. It may be the case that a community is right on the border based on population concerns, and we have to make a choice as to which community is kept together and which is slightly divided in order to meet equal population or the needs of the Voting Rights Act. And so we want to think about which communities most benefit from being included in a single district and which ones might potentially benefit from having multiple representatives if they end up on the border between two districts or too large to be contained in a single district. And I bring that up here in Westminster specifically because I know that came up in our, when we went to districts, looking particularly at Little Saigon in the Vietnamese community, in Little Saigon. Now, when we looked at the current districts, we found that the current district populations just exceeded the constitutional threshold of ten percent. So literally ten point zero six percent deviation, the difference between the largest and the smallest districts. And the most overpopulated of the districts, the one that's driving this ten percent, is District One, the northern, or the northwesternmost district of the city. The smallest district is District Four at the southeastern end of the city. So even though District Three is only ten people out of ideal population, I think it's safe to say that we need to look at all four districts as part of this redistricting process because you're going to have and need to grow all the districts sort of into District One, or perhaps, you know, the map is going to start over from scratch with a completely new, along a different concept line, as we looked at several different options three years ago when we went to districts or two years ago. Our ideal population is twenty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-one. That means that we can have about a two thousand or twenty-two hundred person difference between the largest and smallest at most. Right now, as you can see, we're just above that. Actually, if we had twenty-one fewer people in the city, we would actually be under that ten percent technically. But think of this as an opportunity to adjust now that we have a couple of years living under city council districts in Westminster. As part of our voting rights analysis, we have looked at where we find Latino and Asian American communities. There, the African-American and Native American communities are too small to raise to any significance under the Voting Rights Act. We don't see any concentrations. Of course, for Latinos, we see that the Sigror Park area is the area that's most prominent in terms of the Latino community, right around Westminster Hoover Boulevard, you know, currently in District Two. Or Asian-American communities, we see that Asian-American communities are found throughout the city, but more predominantly in the eastern end of the city, particularly east of Beach Boulevard is where we find the greatest concentrations of Asian-Americans currently in Districts Three and Four. As part of the process, we are putting together a series of mapping tools. In fact, some of these are going to be up hopefully later this week, if not first thing next week. Keep an eye out on the city's redistricting website for more information. I want to emphasize that we continue to hope to see any level of participation, anything from an email or comment made in a public hearing like today, all the way up to a map that you create on your own. We're also happy to accept partial maps. So if you want to draw just one district or one neighborhood or one community, we would love to see that as well. Many of these tools will be familiar to you. So right now, we're putting the final touches on this one-page map, well, with the total populations and so forth throughout the city, that you'll be able to do with your phone, you know, by hand with a calculator or the phone app on your, or calculator app on your phone and draw manually districts in. We got a lot of maps that way last time. In addition, we will have a version of this that works with our Excel spreadsheets so that you'll let Excel do the hard work of tracking track of your ones and zeros, and all you have to focus on is balancing those population numbers. For those of you who want a little bit more, one of our new tools available for this year is, we call it Dave's Redistricting Tool. And what it is, is it lets you draw block by block, kind of paint the city. While the data is limited to total population and citizen voting age population, it does offer a lot for what, for how easy it is to use. You can get started, we have a guide for this that we posted on the website. You just create an account, copy either the blank map or the current city council districts and just start painting. And it'll tell you when you get to your deviations are, what your deviations are, and then you can just email us the link to your final map when you're done. We have guides and instructions for this on, on, online. And then coming later this month, we will have the Caliper Online Redistricting Tool. This is our more, most powerful tool, but it also is one that has the biggest learning curve. And so while we do recommend that if you, I know we had this last time, and some people did submit maps via the redistrict, the Caliper Redistricting Tool back in twenty nineteen, this tool is also one of our more, one of our steeper learning curves. And so we will have this available, but it will take some time to learn. For those of you who are more casual, I really recommend Dave's Redistricting App. It's a great way to get started. And of course, if you have questions about any of these tools, we are hoping to have a series of community workshops throughout the city over the next few months. We're working with the city to get those dates kind of narrowed down and figured out. But we look forward to seeing you in your neighborhood as we go through the process as well. And so with that, I'm happy to answer questions about anything, and I look forward to our discussion today.
Thank you so much for your presentation. And is there any comment from all member of the public? And right now, we open for public comments. If, we don't have any, any Western concern from member of the city council. Basically, I already opened public hearings.
Didn't you, your, didn't your company, the, did the last district maps, right? Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, all right. Thank you.
I think we need to, let's take the public comment first and then.
All right, so now I open for public comments.
I did not receive any ecomments or requests to speak in advance. So at this time, if anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand. Thank you. Okay, so our first speaker would be Lan Quoc Nguyen.
Good evening, mayor and council member. I am Lan Quoc Nguyen. I'm a member of the Vietnamese community. I also had a visit on Bao Sai here in Westminster for almost thirty years. I know that the city is going to the redistricting process to review the, the district layout of the city. But my question is to how come at the same time, the city will undergo, in the same process, the, the hearing for the community input to review the five district layout at the same time? I think will be very confusion to go through the process parallel. I'm on, on, I think on the left, you go to the four district layout, on the right, you go to the five district layout, and people will be very confused. It's more confusion if the people would then all of a sudden go to the ten-year process and then, next day, they go to the thirty days process and then they, they, they both process, they'll do the same thing, they will be racing to meet the deadline imposed by law. And Vice Mayor Nguyen asked question earlier that is there a need to rush to the five years, five district layout? Is there a reason to do that? And apparently, there was no response, no comment from either council member or the staff to that question. Apparently, no one has any good reason to go to that process at, literally at the peril, like two car racing to the same, in the same process for no apparent reason. And this is something that the city itself, the council member will, will expose the city to very confusing process just to rush to meet a deadline, knowing that. there's a lot of reason, a lot of possibility that the city will not meet the deadline. And this is the whole parallel process will be a huge disservice to the city and the resident. It's not an educational process. It is a very confusing process. And the city leadership now knows that. That's what it go and do, to go head on with it. But for some reason, uh, council member decide to go that way then. And I think the community have to try and get ready for the racing of the process just to meet the deadline, just for the sake of doing it. And I wish the city good luck into that process and the resident and the voter or the community member will have to get ready for the, the very confusing process. And I can see ahead of time that this city heading on why why at the same time, there's a lot of other issue that the city can can should be there, might put their mind to. There's a budget crisis looming in, in the city. There's a lot of personnel turnover. Uh, at this time, there's a huge problem with the city staff morale. Uh, at this time, there's a lot of other issue why the city decide to go head on with the confusion mass, uh, and process. And that's those are, um, my comment for the topic here today. And thank you very much for allowing me to speak uh, on this, uh, issue at this time.
Okay. Our next speaker is Khai Minh Dao.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, council members. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, I'm glad you have passed the request to put the issue on the June primary ballot. Again, congratulations on a great, a historical decision that might change the course of our history. However, after hearing your ex- explanation regarding the procedure and the timeline that we have to meet, I just want to remind you guys that even though this is a great idea, a lot of us residents of Westminster are looking forward to seeing it being a reality, not just a big hoax. So please make sure it will actually take place that the residents of Westminster will be represented, will, will be presented a chance to decide if they want to switch from a rotational mayor system to a directly elected mayor system. I would be very disappointed if it would turn out that we would not have enough time to put this vote on the ballot in November twenty twenty-two. I'd like to suggest that the city uh, be conduct a special election so that we have plenty of time to put the vote on the ballot in November twenty twenty-two. If it costs two hundred thousand dollars, then be it. I think we can afford it. We should afford it. We should pay for it. It's totally worth it. Besides that, I'd like to speak on behalf of my friends and many others, fellow residents to apologize to the city, to the rest of the residents for having to put up with all the bickering you have to witness and all the silly speeches and ranting that you have to endure, endure lately. I just want to say that these are not these are just a few rotten apples. They don't represent all of us, especially the Vietnamese, uh, American Vietnamese. Uh, Vietnamese, American.
Mr. Mayor, isn't the related to the public hearing?
Okay, they probably just hired, no, this is totally related. They're probably just hired hands to try to mislead the uninformed or to try to intimidate their bosses, opponent or critics like myself. Again, I'd like to apologize for the uncivilized acts they have committed and all the idiotic lies they had spread. Looking forward to a brighter future for all of us. God bless. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I could. Um, I just want to, uh, respond. Uh, there've been a couple of questions already about uh, the proposed ballot measure. Uh, we are, uh, cognizant of the fact that there will be a ballot measure to go to five districts in June. And so, uh, in the process of doing this, uh, planning, going through communities of interest and so on. Uh, there will be a map prepared that will be contingent for five districts should that ballot measure pass. Um, so that there won't be uh, confusion or uncertainty if it does pass. Doesn't pass, the four district, uh, map that you will be asked to pass in advance uh, will be the map that will move forward after that. And I'm happy to answer the questions. I just was hoping to clarify for the public.
Thank you so much. Alright.
Okay, our next speaker is Terry Rains.
Good evening. The redistricting process is extremely important. I do not want to repeat what took place in twenty nineteen. The community supported one map, the Jolly Rains map. The districts in the Jolly Rains map were the most compact, easiest to understand, contiguous, and had the lowest deviation in geographic size. The districts ran north-south consistently and provided clear identifiable boundaries. Income language spoken at home and shopping districts were all kept together. The city's adopted east-west boundary of Beach Boulevard was preserved. The four oh five freeway corridor was evenly distributed, as were the schools in the Westminster School District. But what did council do? They completely ignored public testimony and adopted the NDC Yellow Map, which wasn't even on the community's radar as a remote possibility. So the residents were extremely disappointed. The Gang of Three at the time had made up their minds before the hearings and chose the Yellow Map to benefit them personally. Virtually all of the major shopping districts and planned redevelopment projects are conveniently concentrated in the two Asian-majority districts, three and four in the current map, all of Bolsa Avenue, the Westminster Mall, and the Bolsa Road Project. They ignored the city's adopted east-west boundary of Beach Boulevard, and they even ignored NDC's recommended election sequencing. They ensured Kimberly Ho would not have to run in a predominantly white district, even though she had lived in one at the time, allegedly. They forced Tye Do basically out of office in twenty twenty-two. They ensured no one would be elected to District One before Charlie Nguyen's term was up in twenty twenty-two. No one provided any real justification for selecting the Yellow Map or changing the recommended sequencing. If the new map adopted this time is anything like this current one, it will be legally challenged. Hey, it's nice to see you again, Dr. Levitt. We will meet again. Um, I noticed that in your presentation and comments, you did not address the five versus four districts, uh, plan that we have, and the deputy city attorney just kind of covered that. Um, I am going to skip the part about the mayor because, uh, the council did pass to put that measure on the ballot. Um, I do want to address, uh, something, uh, comments made by Mr. Lan Quoc Nguyen. Um, you know, the council has already approved the ballot measure. So it's going to happen. And it is not a disservice, as he stated, to do this. It is quite the opposite. I plan, uh, to again actively participate in this process, which will be more complicated this time around because we will, in effect, be creating maps for two different scenarios, for council districts and five council districts. I plan to create at least one map for each scenario. Poll the community to, to determine which maps they like and why, and engage our entire community in this process. With few exceptions, the law allows us only to redraw new maps every ten years after the census. So there are no do-overs when a new council is seated. You must ignore where the current council members live when drafting and considering new maps. Most of our council members have already moved or will be moving uh, before the next election anyway, well, at least on paper. The district boundaries must comply with the United States Constitution, the California Constitution, the Federal Voting Rights Act, and the Fair Maps Act. District boundaries must be adopted based on the following criteria as set forth in the following order of priority. One, to the extent practicable, council districts shall be geographically contiguous. Areas that meet only at the points of adjoining corners are not contiguous. Two, to the extent practicable, the geographic integrity of any local neighborhood or local community of interest shall be respected in a manner that minimizes its division. Community of interest do not include relationships with political parties, incumbents, or political candidates. Important. Three, district boundaries should be easily identifiable and understandable by residents. To the extent practicable, council districts shall be bounded by natural and artificial barriers, by streets, or by boundaries of the city. Four, to the extent practicable, and where it does not conflict with the preceding criteria, council districts shall be drawn to encourage geographical com- compactness in a manner that nearby areas of population are not bypassed in favor of more distant, distant populations. And the council shall not adopt district boundaries for the purpose of favoring or discriminating against a political party. Uh, I, to add to that, um, again, I know it will be complicated during the two. But I thank council for approving to put the ballot measure on, uh, the ballot in June and to let us, the voters, decide because that's where the decision belongs with us. Um, I did have one question for Dr. Levitt. Perhaps he can address it if anybody else has that question, and that is what is the difference between the Excel uh, um, program, which I believe I used last time versus the Caliper, or is that the same? I, I, I tried to catch the slides and take pictures of them as you went through them, but I I just want to clarify that because I don't remember anything. Uh, I, I remember using the Excel program and I, in our city at least, I don't recall any other option being available. Um, but maybe he can clarify that. Council and members of the community, you know what? Let's get it right this time. I will be speaking one more time tonight during regular public comments. Thank you.
Okay.
Alright, uh. Do we have any other speaker for this item?
I have no additional speakers.
Alright, so I'd like to close public comment right now is mayor, council member discussion.
Um, I would like to say, um, uh, thank you for the speakers on this item. And I I encourage all the community to get involved in this process. This is a important issue for our city and, and, you know, every city. Uh, but I really encourage community input and community involvement on this important subject. And, uh, just thank you, Dr. Levitt and Deputy, uh, City Attorney Hall for, uh, for your presentation and your help and look forward to working with you on this important item. Thank you.
So basically, this item is the first public hearing regarding
Mayor.
Process, please.
Mayor. If there is no, um, comments from the council. I'd like to, uh, move to receive and file the staff report on the redistricting process.
Alright, there's a motion. As recommended.
Second.
Alright, we have motion and second to approve four point one public item. Public hearing item as recommended.
Oh, that was a, that was a motion made by Vice Mayor Nguyen and a second by Councilmember Monzo to receive a staff report on the redistricting process and permissible criteria to consider to evaluate the district boundaries and conduct a public hearing to receive public input. Councilmember Do.
Yes.
Councilmember Ho.
Yeah.
Councilmember Monzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes. Yes, yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Thank you so much. Now we go back, uh, to the regular oral communication.
So at this time, if anyone would like to speak for oral communications, please raise your hand. Our first speaker is Terry Rains.
Good evening. The update on review of city policies, item three point eight does not cite specific policies that have been reviewed or updated. It just lists policy types and generic statements about an effort to review them. Councilman Do, is this the update you were expecting? I support recovering maintenance costs for the Liberty Park Parcel, item five point two, but the bigger pick bigger question is, why was the city still maintaining this parcel after selling it? Who authorized this? Since STT sold the property on June thirtieth of this year, recovery would have to come from two parties. Both applications for the Tet Parade Special Event Permit, item five point three, contain errors and or incorrect information. But regardless, the permit should be granted to Little Saigon Tet Parade Association, barring any serious issues with their application or organization because they submitted their application first. Both applicants are strong political rivals in Little Saigon, but the permit approval should have nothing to do with that. First come, first served, period. Related to Project Home Key, item five point four, the former city manager leaked that during a closed session, the council decided not to pursue purchasing a Motel Six to convert and house the homeless because they were worried about pedestrian traffic, which is ludicrous. Funding is there, so let's partner with the county and make it happen. Item five point five, Vice Mayor's behavior is abhorrent and embarrassing. Attacking an event applicant, using the word crap repeatedly, raising his voice and conducting himself in a very unprofessional manner. Charlie, did you read the Code of Ethics you finally signed on ten nineteen? How about you abide by it and maybe seek mental health treatment for your anger issues? Vice Mayor Nguyen's favorite word is my comment about item six point two, crap. The city should hold council meetings in person with a hybrid model to allow for remote or in-person access. If it's okay for the Quan Chi Monument Committee to meet in chambers, it's okay certainly for the council to do the same. The safety measures in the chambers are overkill. It looks like a jail and it negatively, negatively affects sound, lighting, and visibility. Why is Westminster always the last to adapt to change? A real Code of Ethics and Conduct Policy is finally back for consideration tonight, item six point three. The policy should be approved and incorporated into our municipal code by ordinance. The city attorney must review this policy to identify any redundancies or conflicts with the recently adopted nepotism and council staff interaction policies. Please change the implementation section at the end to number one. Change the statement to be signed by members to not only be an affirmation they've read and understand the document, but that they also agree to abide by it. And two, add language that all current members must sign the statement within two weeks of council's adoption, hopefully in the form of an ordinance, not just a resolution. I sent an email to the city attorney yesterday pointing out errors in the Public Official and Employee Interaction Policy Ordinance, item six point four. Council chambers must be added to Section Two C to match the approved resolution. And the date must be corrected in the second, whereas to be October twenty-seventh, not October thirteenth. I will speak, oh, I already did that, uh, that item six point five. Item seven point one, Councilwoman Ho is refusing to appoint Jameson Power to the Planning Commission for some reason. Even though he prom- applied promptly, is an attorney, served on the Westminster School District Board honorably for eight years and is not involved in any of the current political shenanigans. He would be a true asset to the commission, but it's probably because he's not Vietnamese. If not Jameson, I support Terry Vu Nguyen's appointment. Item seven point two, Vice Mayor Nguyen, you have a reading comprehension problem. The nepotism ordinance clearly states that it only applies to individuals appointed on or after October twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one. Why do you only want to remove Weston C from the Planning Commission but not from the Citizen Oversight Committee? Because you want to appoint a political supporter to the Planning Commission? Hmm, get over it, Charlie. If your daughter was still serving, we would not be having this conversation, would we? Neither should have been appointed in the first place, but what's done is done. Going forward, no relatives will be appointed. End of story. The mayor, vice mayor, and their thugs continue to spew BS in the Vietnamese media. The mayor appeared on Chin Cook Wi's YouTube program, you know, the guy he awarded the official certificate of recognition to, written all in Vietnamese. Worse, in the background is a fake American flag with twenty-three stripes on it. The flag must only have thirteen stripes. Why do these city officials and their supporters repeatedly disrespect our nation's flag and flag code? If we added stripes to their precious South Vietnam flag, they would go ballistic, and that country doesn't even exist anymore. And finally, in the news, a rental property owned by Councilwoman Ho was raided last week. Numerous arrests were made, weapons seized, and law enforcement resources were drained. Here's my advice. If you own rentals in the city that you officially represent, please don't be a slumlord. Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Lan Quoc Nguyen. Our next speaker is Lan Quoc Nguyen. Lan?
Good afternoon again. I'm good. I'm sorry. Good evening. My name's Lan Nguyen. Um, I want to speak on the item five point three on the application of the Little Saigon Westminster Tet Parade Association to apply for the permit to organize uh, this coming Tet Parade on February the fifth, uh, of two thousand twenty-two. I'm the president of the that organization. I want to, uh, I, I want to, I want to, um, ask the the city council to grant another application, uh, because uh, we have experience to organize this event at the staff report to you, the last, uh, test parade, but one of the best that uh, we organize in the city. It was started on time. It's ended right on the spot. Uh, there was a, a lot of people in attendance, and people were very happy that how the event was organized. Uh, this year, we intend to come back and organize a, a much better event. We have planned to invite the Vietnamese community from all over the U.S. to send their representative delegation to participate in the event. Uh, the Tet Parade this year, uh, will be a showcase or the cultural event um, of, uh, of the U.S., the Vietnamese community, uh, to showcase to the world of, of what the exile, the Vietnamese community is driving, uh, in the U.S. Uh, we intend to plan to encourage people to travel to Little Saigon to participate in event instead of traveling, uh, to Vietnam or the Asian country, what they normally do. Especially this year during the closeout of the pandemic. We've encouraged people to travel to the, to Little Saigon here and spend their holidays here. And of course, they spend the money here in Little Saigon that will help in the local economy. And we have a, a very good, uh, opportunity to do that, to bring in uh, tourists, guests, and participate for participant from all the world, the world to, to come to Little Saigon to participate in the Tet Parade here. Um, I have much more to say, but, um, I would like to respect time for, for everyone. I will be available uh, and open to answer any question to the council member, uh, or any staff. Uh, if any question you can have, I will be open and available to answer any question uh, on behalf of the Little Saigon Westminster Tet Parade. And thank you very much for allowing me to speak again, uh, on this item, item five point three on the agenda.
Okay, our next speaker is Fat Boy.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Mayor and distinguished council members, on behalf of the Vietnamese-American Federation of Southern California and Little Saigon Tet Parade, I would like to thank you all for working with us on the Tet Parade since twenty thirteen through twenty nineteen. And that was seven Tet Parades in seven years. We had received so much support from all of the staff at the director level to the first level staffs. And so before we begin, on behalf of the veterans, the communities, I would like to thank you all, mayors, council members, city employees, for supporting us all those years. These years, at the last, uh, at the third weeks of October, with the months of, uh, with only three months before Ted is coming to Little Saigon community, we realized that no one have planned or organized and applied for the Ted Parade. So many had approached us and asked the community to spring forward to do it for the city of Westminster. And that what we did. On October twenty-fourth, Little Saigon Tet Parade, also known as Vietnamese-American Federation of Southern California Tet Parade, had officially seek the city permit to organize the Tet Parade twenty twenty-two on February fifth. And we are the very first. Our Tet Parade is the same group as with, uh, uh, the first name, Little Saigon Tet Parade. Uh, so that we can unite various associations together from the Vietnamese-American Federation of Southern California to the two major uh, Veterans Association, namely, uh, Linh Ho Gochin Si and, uh, uh, Chung Tam Tin Am, which is known as Coalition of the Vietnamese Veterans and the Assembly of the um, RVNA Oversea. Uh, we also work with the Vietnam War Veterans of America. And together, we bring eight years of experience, know-how, and well-established working relationship with city staff through the years. You know, with only two months and a half left before Ted, this level of calibers is crucial to pull together another great, successful Ted Parade. This shortness of time remind us of the very first Ted Parade in twenty thirteen, when we were able to pull through even only two short months to raise some one hundred thousand dollars while planning and organizing, organizing the very first Ted Parade with no prior experience. This time it is much different. We already have eight years of experience backing us up. It is with, uh, a great success and we are, uh, confident now, um, uh, that, uh, we have the know-how to pull together another great success for the city of Westminster. And so mayor and council members, you can count on us. We are ready tomorrow, I mean literally tomorrow, to make a financial deposit to the city and roll the sleeve to work. Thank you for your support and for your vote. And I am on standby to answer any questions should you have any's. But I'm glad back to you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Tuibo.
Hello, am I on?
Yes.
Yes, um, I, um, two thousand nineteen. I was one of in, uh, in regarding to, uh, Fat Boy just, um, uh, discussed. I was one of the helper. I mean, I was, um, Guang Trung. Um, was, uh, Hoi Ai Hiu, that, Taichung Bendin, is the French, uh, the French Association of Taichung Bendin. And I was, uh, one of the team that I was support, and he was very well organized. And I was, um, one of the leader that was, uh, organizing the bed. Um, and, um, it went very well, and I really hope that the city council um, supporting his, uh, requests and, uh, his submit for the bed parade. Because it's, it's very, um, it will bring it, um, so that the children, the people, uh, because it was like two years that, uh, we haven't have one. So I think it's, um, um, people are looking forward to see then, uh, the parade again with, uh, all these, even though it's in a short time, but I think with the experience that he had lead the whole organization, um, um, to, to be successful. That's what I believe. No, I, I just heard he said, so I wa- I wasn't prepared for the supporting, so please, um, excuse me. Yeah, thank you.
Our next speaker is Robert Posey.
Hi, uh, my name is Robert Posey. I live in Westminster. I would like to ask that all the members of the council be transparent in the, the item of seven point two. You, you all approved the anti-nepotism policy at the last council meeting, so you should implement what you have approved. I do not have anything against Weston State, who is Councilmember Ho's son. However, I think Weston should resign to show that his family, especially his mother, Councilmember Ho, is obeying the city laws. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Kai Min Dao. Kai? At this time, if any else, anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand. Let me try Kai one more time.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Uh, I again want to express my commendation and gratitude toward the council members who had taken a historical giant step to finally consider a voting system that would best serve our city. I apologize if I spoke off topic before, but I would like to reiterate myself, uh, my concern and recommend that you would move the, uh, referendum from June next year to March or Jan- January or even earlier, allowing us more time to make sure that the measure will be included in the November twenty twenty-two ballot. Regarding all the fathers and lies that had been spoken during recent oral communication sessions, I'm glad that Lan Quoc Nguyen finally have the guts to show up and present his own case. Instead of feeding elderly in uninformed citizens with lies and urge them to come up here to spread lies on their behalf in order to regain the majority of the council that have been so used to for so long. I would
Mr. Mayor.
To thank also woman for
He can't present it to the council, but not
the council to the people. Let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Okay, last call for speakers. I have no additional speakers. Oh, wait, one.
With that, I'd like to, I'd like to close all the communication. And next we have consent calendar. Or matter of listener, the consent calendar, I consider routine and maybe a rule by a single motion followed by a roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. Unless member of the city council or staff request that specific items be removed from the consent calendar for a separate session or this discussion. Move to approve. All right.
Yeah, I'd like to staff report on the three point eight.
All right, so they're requesting cool item. Report. Three point eight. So, uh, Vice Mayor, uh, would you like to modify your motion then?
Yes, I want to modify my motion except for, um, three point eight, just remember Doe asked to prove for, for the, um, explanation. So I'd like to go ahead and approve, uh, move to approve from, uh, three point one to three point seven.
All right, I second that. So we have the motion, uh, and second to rule consent calendar, but item three point eight. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yeah.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
All right, so item two point eight, update on review of council policies. Who would like to give a, a staff report?
Could I, could I change that vote?
What?
Could I change that vote, please?
All right.
Yeah, I want to pull three point three.
So I need another motion to, uh,
I can amend that, amend that motion or
I go ahead and, uh, amend my mo- uh, motion to exclude the three point three and three point eight.
All right, so there's a modify motion to approve the consent, but three point three, right? Am I right?
Yes.
Right, this is, this is to reconsider it. And, and Mayor, you seconded it. So you second that motion?
Yes, so I
Prove everything except for three point
Yes, I'd like to modify my, uh, second too. Yeah, not a problem.
Okay, take, take that vote again, if you could.
Roll call vote again.
Improving everything.
Okay, so to clarify, that motion was made by Vice Mayor Nguyen and a second by Mayor Ta, and that was to approve the consent calendar, except items three point three and three point eight. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
All right, so item, uh, three point three. We need a staff report.
You say three point three?
Correct.
Oh, yeah. I just want to, um, I just didn't see it last time. We talked about, we said, uh, from the next uh, appointee on, so we just need to add that on. That's all.
City, city attorney, can you clarify the, with that October twenty-seventh means?
Yeah, we, we did, uh, include that in the, in the first reading, so in terms of the motion that was made, that it would apply from appointees, new appointees appointed on or after October twenty-seventh, uh, twenty twenty-one. That was the motion that was made last time, and it should be incorporated into this one.
All right, so city attorney already explained, is already in lieu in that ordinance.
Thank you.
Then I Yeah, it actually, actually, now that I see it, it's just section six of the ordinance, the very last line.
Thank you.
All right. So I move, I move to approve.
I second.
All right, we have motion and, uh, second, uh, to prove this item, please.
So that motion was, that motion was made by Mayor Ta, and second by Councilmember Ho, and that was to adopt ordinance number twenty-five seventy-six as amended in ordinance of the city council of the city of Westminster, California, adding chapter two point six nine committees, commissions generally to title to administration and personnel of the Westminster Municipal Code regarding nepotism on boards, boards committees and commissions read by title only and wait for the reading. So Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yeah.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
All right, next item, three point eight, please. All right, next item, three point eight, please. So who would like to give an update on, on the, on the review of city policies?
I, I, I can address this. I asked to have this item put on the consent counter so we can, so we can bring it back to to the council since we have new leadership in the police department as well as city hall. I put it on the February twenty-four agenda to have the council to order the city manager back then to implement an old camera overhaul update of the city policy to, number one, protect city employees. And number two is holding all of department heads accountable to protect the, the city employees from to have a free, a harassment-free environment. Eliminate all verbal policy, the so-called verbal policy, which technically not the policy. And when you deal with a verbal policy, it's nothing but problem. It would not hold water in court. Especially, you know, in, you know, after having to listen to the city leadership in earlier this year and when I when the verbal policy were mentioned, this called me to really concern. So since we have new leadership in the police department, Chip Lengy, welcome, sir. I would like the, to ask the interim city manager to to order all the department hats to overhaul all of the city policy and especially establishing procedure and training to all employees and department heads. And, and eliminate all the verbal policy that we have so that we have like consistent all the ruined procedures in place. So I understand that this is, this is going to be a huge task for Christine and the chief. So it, it's not going to be, it's not going to happen overnight, but I when, you know, when I talk to the former leaders, leadership in the city, I was assured that it can just can be done administratively, but it seems like it's real easy to get buried and forgotten. So is any way we can have a a frequent report from the city manager and as well as the police chief to, you know, so that we can have an update as to what have we done as a city to implement and update our policy and procedures?
We can certainly do that.
Once every couple of months?
I'd say once a quarter is reasonable.
Thank you very much.
I have questions. I think it's not a bad idea to update their policies. Once in a while, we have to take a look at the policies that we had in place. The question is that, you know, we want to review all policies. And I know that a lot of policies in place, I know that the council member Doe mentioned about, you know, department heads, and I understand that we are talking to department head to make sure that they they look at, or they review the policy related to their departments. But I'm pretty sure that there's a lot of policies in each department itself. So I recommend that we, from the staff standpoint, maybe you can prioritize what topics or what policies that need to be reviewed first. And then, you know, that by in doing so, we can attack one by one. And at the same time, I don't know that we have the timeframe for this, where we just, you know, just go along as, you know, staff having, I know we short of staff right now, too. We are we don't have enough staff to look into this. So I don't know. Do you have the timeframe for this? Or you just, we just go as we can, go along as we can, council member Doe?
I think, I think I, I, I have a complete confidence in the leadership of the and city hall as well as the police department. The new leadership will evaluate and working with the city staff and the PD staff to evaluate our policy and procedure, especially in the area where we have to face frequent lawsuits. You know, those are the risk management, we have to take and we have to be updated immediately so that we as well won't happen again. And again, I, I understand it's a huge task. I'm not asking the city manager to have it done in a couple of days or even a couple of months. But they have, they have to have a systematic way to slowly and surely and working with a city attorney to to make sure that we have a good policy and procedure throughout city hall and as well as the police department, especially in the area of promotion. Make sure it's a fair, justifiable and impartial.
I have a question for interim city manager as far as council member Doe mentioned, you know, that we have unwritten policies and we, do we have, we have that? And so do you have an idea how many and why?
So as, so as far as unwritten policy, it's not really a policy. If it's unwritten, it's more along the lines of this is how we've always done it, or it's the practice and so that being said, I don't know what that looks like, but you know, as a best practice for an organization, yes, we should be having policies and procedures written out as to what, you know, what, what steps we, we take for certain processes, et cetera. A lot of those things that we do is already dictated in the government code or in state code or some kind of other law that's out there. And so, you know, so that being said, those are available, but if, you know, but it's, it's not, it's not uncommon to, for a city or an organization or department to have policies within their departments. And so, you know, as, so we do have new leadership, you know, as mentioned and evident. So I can, you know, I can confidently say with the leadership that we have so far, you know, for example, our HR department, you know, we have our new HR director that started back in July. And one of the first things she did was start going through our, you know, our personnel manuals, our processes and procedures. And as things come up, she's trying to update those. That's just an example of, of, you know, of what that department's doing. So if there are processes that are not, you know, that are not necessarily written, she's trying to put those into a written form. You know, we're doing that right now in the city clerk's office as well. City clerk's office for years has had these written policies and procedures on, you know, on what goes on the agenda or what the process is for a public records request, et cetera. But we've also had, you know, five clerks in the last ten years, and so some of that hasn't been updated. So this is really just a good opportunity to update those. So to circle back on the whole written, you know, unwritten policy thing. If there's something that we're doing that has been a best practice, we're going to put that into the policy if that is something that we're going to continue to do. So as we're all individually in our own departments, looking at our processes, we will identify some of those, some of those things that are unwritten.
Yeah, I would like to, one that I kind of worries with for me in the past was HR complaints and the timeframe that those were addressed. Needs to be whatever needs to happen to take that structure, you know. I think that's gotten in trouble, gotten us in trouble in the past that taking too long to address those HR complaints when we came in. And the other one was for me, as, as council member Doe mentioned, that I would like to see on the, on the police department side is the promotion side. Is that, I think in the past, we had some issues there as well. So, so I would like to see that. So thank you.
All right, is there any other comment? I think this item staff only asked the council to receive and file. Am I right?
Yeah.
All right.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second to receive and file.
Council member Doe.
Yes.
Council member Ho.
Yes.
Council member Monzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes, yes, yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Thank you. Next item. All right, next item, five point one, approval of snack bar concession agreement.
Move to approve.
Second. Right, motion and second to rule this item five point one.
That motion was made by council member Monzo and a second by Mayor Ta. And that was to approve an agreement between the city of Westminster and Huntington West Little League for use of the snack bar facility located at Buckingham Park and authorize interim city manager to execute the agreement. The agreement. So council member Doe.
Yes.
Council member Ho.
Yes.
Council member Monzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes, 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 yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
All right, next item, five point two, maintenance cost for parcel of Liberty Park.
Good evening, mayors, city council members. These items were requested by councilwoman Ho to place on the agenda tonight regarding the maintenance cost recovery for the sole parcel of Liberty Park. So this parcel of land is about ten thousand two hundred square feet. The city had been maintaining it since it was sold in August of two thousand sixteen until September of this year. The area of the parcel is about four and a half percent compared to the overall area of the Liberty Park. With that staff calculated, the annual mowing maintenance cost is about five hundred eighty-three dollars and six cents. So for the last five years, it would total to two thousand five hundred, I'm sorry, two thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars and twenty-nine cent. So with the interest and the administrative fees, the grand total is about three thousand five hundred sixty-two dollars and three cent. I would like to add it tonight that at the time the staff report was submitted, staff didn't have the cost of the water used for irrigation and the tree trimming for this parcel. So I would like to report that we have pulled information for the last five years and get all the numbers together and we come up with the water that we use for irrigation is about four thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars and ten cent. And the one-time tree trimming that in two thousand nineteen is about, is five hundred thirty-five dollars and fifty cents. So the new grand total with the interest and administrative fees is nine thousand three hundred forty-six dollars and nineteen cent. So staff recommend the mayors and the city council consider the total maintenance costs for this sole parcel for the last five years and provide direction regarding the cost recovery. That conclude my presentation.
Okay. Okay, this is my item. I'm, I'm so disturbed, so, so disturbed. And I hope you are too, because if you're not, something's wrong. So you're telling me that what I calculated to be like twelve dollars a week. I mean, are you talking about today's costs of living? Or are you giving me the cost of like thirty years ago?
The cost is we have the cost from the contractor that doing the service, the mowing service for that park. A monthly rate now, the current charge is about a thousand dollars, something for entire park. So we take about four and a half percent out of that is, is equated to that amount.
Okay. So so first of all, I would just want to ask you, could you confirm that there has not been any improvements like lights or any lights installed or any fences or anything like that installed by the owner? Any improvement whatsoever?
Not at all.
Not at all, the same as it was.
I pause it. What is that?
The same as it was before.
Same as it was before, yes.
Before it was sold.
Yes, nothing have changed in that area.
Nothing changed. I didn't think so. Okay, so here are the facts, everybody. So you're aware that the parcel was sold to the adjacent property owner, and then you've got code enforcement who went after the owner for tree trimming, maintenance, but couldn't require him to install a new fence to separate the public and private properties. So I was, this is what I'm seeing. These are the facts that are that, that I have pretty much verified. So in your email, Jake, on October sixth, you stated that in the spirit of keeping this area clean and safe for the public, our maintenance contractor has been mowing the grass since they are there to mow the park. So I'm not targeting you, Jake. I appreciate everything you do and you, and I just want to let everybody know that Jake is, you've only been on board as a director. You, you, you got promoted when?
As July, as July, beginning of July.
So this is by all means, this is not your fault. This is something that happened five years ago in two thousand sixteen. And so I okay, so I just, but I, I just need to ask you because I don't know who else to ask in public works, since you are now the director. Okay, so you stated that the monthly mowing costs that you calculated based on square footage, ten thousand two hundred square feet from September of two thousand sixteen to September twenty twenty-one. And that is five hundred eighty-three dollars a year. Would you mind mowing my lawn? I, I can tell you that I pay seventy-five bucks a week. And I'm telling you that I, I don't think they, you know, there's nothing to do in the middle. So basically, it's a little piece in the front, a little piece in the back. And it's probably, you know, it's probably like probably about two thousand square feet. Okay, and I visited. I went onsite yesterday to visit little piece, this little piece. If you haven't, if, if people haven't visited, this little piece, I can tell you, it is really the pride and joy piece. Okay, and this is the piece that is probably the best piece of Liberty Park that got sold. And, and you know, I just don't appreciate that the mayor and his team went on YouTube and painted this picture that this is like, as if this is like a sliver. It's not a sliver. I, it's not a sliver. It's huge. It's ten thousand two hundred square feet. If you can just imagine, six thousand square feet is really the average lot. Okay, I help a lot of residents, homeowners. So I've seen a lot of lots popped on that screen. I viewed a lot. And I, I can tell you that you speak to our planning director or manager. So the, the average lot in the city of Westminster residential lot is about six thousand to sixty-five hundred. This is ten thousand two hundred. It's beautiful. And it's got trees. It's got seven to eight trees. So I'm really disturbed because this is the, you know, I'm, I'm going to tell you several things that, you know, I'd like the city attorney to also be aware. So this is the cost that actually costs our city. Now, you know, the people who did wrong, okay, I believe we got robbed. This is an inside job. Okay, so I can tell you that this piece was basically not only sold at a very low, you know, like at a steal, okay, it was like you get, we gave it away. And then on top of that, we maintain it. We maintain it for the people we gave it away to. So, oh my gosh. And then this is the cost that I, I, I basically did a little bit of asking, really not a whole lot. But it's, we have to contract out. Would you tell me if I'm right, Mr. City Attorney Christian? That we contracted this out to a landscape landscaping company. Is that correct? Or do we do that in-house? Or do we do that in-house?
Um, I can answer that, um, we contracted out to the outside contractor.
I, I should have asked you, but because it's relating to a contract. So, so my question is, okay, we contracted this guy, this out, this, this piece or this whole, you know, did, I just want to know, does that contractor know that they are mowing Liberty Park plus the neighbors' piece? Do they know that?
No, this information will never been informed, I mean, never, we weren't.
Well, that's the point, that's the point is, the point is, somebody did wrong. I'm not about to follow, okay? I'm not about to follow their footsteps and, and cover up for them. Okay, and also do the wrong thing. Because you're trying to recover the cost. And the cost, uh, and you're telling me that because the contract, you know, you got a deal because they're mowing Liberty Park and they're, they got a contract. But the contract is with the city, the contract is not with the STT group. Okay, so I, I, I don't understand that from a business standpoint, I can tell you that I'm looking and I'm saying, okay, you know what? This is like, okay, you know what you guys are doing is that this is becoming really unfair. It's unfair for people that you attempted to put on this weed abatement program. I'm one of those people. I'm one of those people that I, you put me on this weed abatement program and I got on that program. And you call me and you, you do whatever you gotta do to, to make sure that I comply and, and and I got several calls, yeah, and I comply, I don't even wait for you guys. My, my people just don't wait for you to call. So I don't understand that the weed abatement program, you charge them, what, okay, so I, I looked into the weed abatement program. And it says, so that program, how did that program come about? Could you tell me, Mr. Jake, now?
Sure, absolutely. So the weed abatement program that every years we have listed any vacant properties within the cities. And we do inspections, uh, we do twice a year. Um, and we will send out letters if any property has not been maintained as far as weed and trash. Um, we, we typically, first thing we send out are remind letters for them to, you know, take care of the property. And then we do the inspections. If then, if they failed to do, to maintain their lot at the time we inspected, then we send out the letter, the certify letter, let them know that by, like, you know, certain day that they have to get this lot cleaned or else we will move, mobilize, you know, the city's contractor coming there and charge them with a certain square footage. Um, I think it's just like six hundred, seven hundred dollars per thousand square feet or so. I have to confirm that number, but.
Seven hundred sixty-five dollars each time.
Or for, for.
For this particular.
Correct, correct, for, for that. And also um, the thirty-two percent administrative fee added on top. If, like I said, if they're not compliant by the time that we gave it to them.
And that would be a thousand dollars, nine, a thousand nine dollars and eighty cents.
Yeah, so, so what, what I did, um, I went further with the weed abatement. If, if the council, the council desired to, to place this maintenance cost into the weed abatement program. And I have break it down to some costs here that we have about six hundred and seventy-five dollars for each time that we have to move in for that square footage. Time, time, ten times, twice a year, so five years or ten times. So we have a total of seven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. And then we add in the water cost as well as the tree trimming. So it's total about twelve thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars and sixty cents. And if you put an interest on it and also the administrative fee, then the total running to about sixteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-two cents.
Okay, but, but I don't understand, so the weed abatement, it's twice a year that you inspect. Okay, do you think if you go without mowing this Liberty Park piece, I don't care if the whole park or any, you know, you've got a full piece with grass. And if you go for six months without mowing, then what do you think? Is that going to look like a cornfield? Would you not come out and inspect it? Like, would you wait for six months, every six months you're going to go inspect it? That's, that's on a, a, an abandoned piece. And maybe they don't have a whole lot of, they don't have grass, they just have weed. Okay, this, you've got grass. Okay, so grass you gotta cut. If you don't want to cut for me once, um, once a week, like we all do, you know, we have a landscaper that comes once a week, then I would, I would expect you to charge them once a month. The weed abatement program price, because that's what you would charge me. If you don't want to charge me, if, if you charge them the price that, the discounted price that we are getting, that's wrong. Because you ask, you have this contract. The contractor is, is, is relying, is trusting you to tell him the truth. If you were to sell this little piece and it belongs to somebody else, you gotta tell him and say, hey, you, you know, we don't, this piece doesn't belong to us anymore. So, you know, so, but now he's thinking, he's probably mowing and tomorrow he's gonna go mow that thing. And he's gonna think that, hey, did, you know, this is part of my contract. I don't think you've been fair to him. And then I don't want him to come back and go after our city when he finds out because it's all over the news that this piece got sold. And he's been working on it, he's the landscaper that's probably been working on it for years. So I don't, I don't feel like, I don't like, I don't feel like doing that to him. I don't want to do that to him, I don't want to put our city in jeopardy. So what I want to do is be fair and set money aside because I don't know exactly, but we could discuss that with a city attorney. We could discuss that in, in closed session. But I really think that, that's, that's one thing I see is that you cannot charge someone every six months like you do with a weed abatement program because that program is for people who really have like no grass. So therefore, no grass to cut, just weed. But weed, you know, they want, they grow, they do grow and, and, you know, every six months. You know, that's, that's reasonable. But you gotta multiply that by, you would, I would have to say you multiply, because right now it's only two times, so you have to multiply that by six more times. Because then you would get it twelve times, so that would be once a month. Okay? And I'll tell you what to do with that number, I'll work with the city attorney. And we'll, we'll talk about what to do with that number. Okay? Because this is not fair, I mean, you're charging him twelve dollars a week, you know, would you like to come over and maintain? If you, if you don't want to maintain mine, that's fine, I'm a council member, I'm not going to ask for special treatment. But how about maintaining the guy next to Liberty Park, the first house next to, at, you know, the other end? You know, you've got this end is STT, you've got the other end that's got a house right there, just maintain that house at twelve dollars a week.
Can I ask a question?
This is impossible.
Can I ask a question real quick so I can understand? I'm not sure I understand, uh, did, it, did we know that we sold that parcel? That piece of land? Did anybody inform, uh, inform Public Works?
Yes, yes.
Can I ask another question?
You know it was sold, right?
No, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't know, we didn't have a knowledge of, it was sold.
Who, who is we, you or Public Works?
It's Public Works.
Okay, so no, no, no one informed Public Works that the piece of, uh, parkland was sold? So the, is that a fair statement to say that that is why that Public Works continued to maintain that parkland like it's never sold? Is that, is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
No, Jake, I don't agree with you. When I first talked to you, and actually, as a matter of fact, I spoke to the former Public Works Director. Okay, before you, and he confirmed that that was sold. Okay, and then you also knew that was sold.
Not, not I know it, because.
Okay, you're, you've been on the job three months, but I know when I confirm with him. The first thing, the first person I called was him, even though he's retired. But first person I called was him. And he said, oh yes, we know it's sold, okay? And then as a matter of fact, I, you know, if you want to, I can go and, and read to you some of the things. Yeah, you know, like such as code enforcement going after, asking them to put a fence around. You, you wouldn't do that unless you know that it's sold, okay? And code enforcement went after the owner for tree trimming maintenance, but couldn't require him to install a new fence to separate the public and private properties. So I know for sure, okay, I know for sure that they know. And because I confirmed it, I confirmed it with the previous Public Works Director. So. So basically, I'm, I'm telling you that I, I would never get away with it. As even, I don't care who, whether it be me or just any resident in the city, would never get away with it. So I don't know, why is this person so privileged? By whose order, by whose order? Okay, and so I, I'm not taking on you, I'm sorry, Jake, I, you know, you're doing a good job. The only thing is, you're, you're the only person in the Public Works I can talk to. And, you know, since Public Works is in charge of something like this, and I, you know, so, okay, so basically, they should not be paying or charging the same fee as us because that discount belonged to us. And it needs to be really clear. And you cannot, you can't lie and, and, and do the same thing to, to, to that landscaper, a contractor of ours. Okay, because they gave us the discount, that discount isn't to be passed on to our neighbors. I don't think they would approve of that, that's not right. And that, that is just illegal. And, and if they know it, then fine, sign here, that you know we pass along for the last five years. But if not, I refuse to just let this slip by and, 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 and let us, you know, we just like, you know, so we're all in cahoots then. We would be all in cahoots, we're no better than the ones who sold our property. Okay, it's, it, like I said, it's a job, it's, it's, we've been robbing, it's an inside job, I can tell you that, okay?
Thank you, can I, can I butt in here real quick? Um, I mean, I've been here, thank you councilmember Ho for doing your homework on this. Uh, the more that, the more information comes out, the, the worse, the worse it makes us look. Um, I mean, I, I, I mean, this, I mean, like councilmember Doe just said and, and, uh, and then you said you spoke to the previous, uh, Public Works Director about this. It's like, so there was a paper trail after that council, the council meeting when they got approved and the consent calendar, so what happens to that? To that, um, report once it gets approved by council? So the departments, the property department's got to be made aware of the council action. So it's, so, uh, Public Works knew that it was not city's property anymore. Like, I mean, what's going on that?
Yeah.
We continue to, to be, to mow a private, private property. It just totally makes us, uh, our city look so, so bad and, and now you have, now you're tough saying that code enforcement needed went out there to a private property and trying to enforce the code. So the question is continues to say, why do we continue to maintain this property when?
Well, it's by, by whose order?
By whose order?
And, if I may, if my, if my, if I may just finish, you know.
Okay, go ahead, can I have a few?
I apologize. But, you know, when I spoke to the, and I'm, I'm going to try to be really respectful and, and not mention names, but because he's not here anymore. And, you know, the thing is, when, you know, he told me, he said, well, I, I know, I know it wasn't, I know it was sold. Uh, and so he knew, he knew it was sold, he said, but I, I just don't know, um, you know, and, and so go ask Jake. And I said, but Jake has only been on the job for like two months, that was the time when, you know, now three months. So at the time, it was only two months, because this is like a month, a month ago when I found out. I was actually livid about the sale of the park. And then on top of that, it was like you, you maintain it for free for these guys. So I didn't even get into the, uh, you know, that, that, that subject matter because it would have just, I would have been so upset and today didn't want to have, I didn't want to deal with two issues, both issues at one time. So today we're dealing with that recovering, uh, recovery, um, uh, task. And, um, you know, so I want to say that, um, so, so here's the thing, is that I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, the landscaper i- is not our, our own. So we do have a contract with the landscaper, I don't want to breach a contract. Okay, if this is, that he's, he finds out and if he's not, he's, if he doesn't find out, somebody's gonna find out and then direct him to go to his attorney and then say, hey, you know, did you know you, you maintained the neighbors', the neighbors' park two?
Councilmember, councilmember, let me act here, I don't, I don't want to create issues.
I, I understand that, but I, you know what, like I said, I'm just not going to listen anymore because i- i- I, I, certain things, the public needs to know. Okay, and so it makes sense that, you know, here, you gotta, you gotta make it right. Okay, and you can't continue to, to deceive, just one person deceiving the public after the next. And I'm not going to just, I mean, I'm going to be a part of that. Okay, so, like I said, I just need you to make it right. If you need to, Mr. City Attorney, then you go find and, you know, make it right by getting a release from, you know, financial responsibility and, and then fine, you can charge them whatever you want. But right now, I'm going to assume that we may owe someone. And if you don't want me to be really clear about that, then that's fine. But I want our council to approve and ask and give, uh, Public Works Director directions to go after these folks for, because remember, this, this property has changed hands since June of this year. So, okay, because of this great piece of land that we gave away to make, you know, the first bank building, you know, really square, it actually added value to their property. You know, it actually, within three, five years, they made three million dollars. What's public information, it was sold for six point two five or six point five million dollars. So, you know, and so I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that, uh, I know that the current owner does not have any, well, if anything, she only owes, he only owes, you know, three months, four months, and it's only been since June, five months. But then the rest is owed by the former. Okay, so, um, did I already tell you how to do that calculation? So I don't believe you should be charging them. Yes, he kind, it's kind of a cross between the weed abatement program and the, you know, the landscaping for the neighbor type of program. You know, so you're going to have to multiply that by twelve months. I, I don't agree that, I mean, our landscaper comes every week. But I, if we do, if we times it by, was it four weeks? Then they, they would owe us an astronomical amount. But I'm going to just, okay, I'd be okay if we multiplied that by, by, you know, like just once, once a month. So times twelve months. But if you tell me like on a weed abatement and where you multiply by two months, you're only doing this twice, I disagree. Totally disagree. So I, I, and how much would that come out if you calculated my way? And then let everybody know what that amount is and then we could, you know, vote on that.
What do you mean you disagree, like how many times is the right amount?
Okay, so the weed abatement program is, um, they charge seven hundred for, for this piece, okay? For the piece this size, it's seven hundred sixty-five, Jake, and could you tell me if I'm right about that? Because that came from your calculations, okay? Um, uh, okay, so, so seven hundred sixty-five dollars each time and adding thirty-two percent in admin fee. Because I know you charge administrative fee and then you get, we'll get interest on top of that. So then usually weed abatement, they only come out twice a year and give you a ticket if you don't fix it and if you don't weed it, then they weed, well, our city would weed and charge you seven hundred sixty-five dollars for that size piece. And then they bill you. So we would have to calculate it based, I mean, under that assumption, okay?
I have a question, why?
Multiply that by twelve.
I just, I just want to ask Jake, um, just according to your original, the, the, um, staff report, you, you mentioned out here that, that we pay a thousand sixty-seven and eighty-seven cents per month for the entire park for mowing only, is correct? But then I don't understand how, how to, if you multiply that by twelve months, that's over twelve thousand eight hundred dollars. So out of that twelve thousand eight hundred dollars, you're saying that that for that ten thousand square foot piece, it's only five hundred and eighty-three dollars out of the twelve thousand?
Yeah.
So basically. Really no sense to me.
I may explain, may explain. So the, the entire Liberty Park is about, I think it's a little more, a little more than five acres. And this parcel, if you convert it to acre, is about a little less than a quarter of acres. So if you, when you take the, you know, it's percentage wise, it's about four point five percent. So what it did, it took the four point five percent. So what it did, it took the four point five percent. You know, from from the one thousand sixty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cent and multiply it by twelve. So that that come up to five hundred and eighty-three dollars per month. So I proportionally compared to the overall park, how much we pay.
I I wanna get that deal, that is a pretty good deal.
I know, and it's twelve dollars a week.
It's twelve, yeah.
Twelve dollars a month, right? Twelve dollars a month, because you take five hundred and eighty-three dollars a year, you divide it by twelve. That's twelve dollars a month, and that's only like took, okay, so five hundred four eighty, sorry. Five eighty-three, divide that by uh twelve months, that is forty-eight dollars a month. And then you divide that by four weeks, so that's twelve dollars a week.
Didn't you say four percent? What is the four percent of one thousand?
I'm sorry?
What is the four percent of one thousand?
The four percent is the area is about four point five percent.
I understand. And what four percent of one thousand?
It's a forty dollars something.
O- okay, so.
Eight dollars, I think we calculate about a monthly about forty-eight dollars something.
Okay, I'm not a genius, but four, four doll, I mean, forty dollars is about four four percent of one thousand, right? So your your calculation is, uh, I don't think it's is off. But yes, it's something that we can, can we discuss this, uh, 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 have a staff report to recapitulate this?
Yeah, I would say, okay, I'm fine with that. If you want to do your math and figure out, but like I said, it's on the weed of abatement rate. It's not like a program, but I meant like weed abatement rate. And be fair, because it it's not, it shouldn't be twice a year, it should be once a year, once a month. Because that's that's, you know, you don't go and mow that thing that's full of grass and do it every six months. So it would have to be every month. I mean, you're doing every week, really. But I'm gonna charge him every month. That's that's, I think is reasonable. Otherwise, you would have grass that grow, you know, as high as like that. It's gonna look like a cornfield, but it doesn't. It looks so beautifully manicured. I mean, you've got seven trees, eight trees, and I know there were some trees down over the years. And but I don't see you charging them for that either. So wow, you just maintained, you just gave away a tax dollars.
Uh, Jacob, I hate to put you on the spotlight. Councilmember Ho said you're the only one that's here and you're in the hot seat. But the question goes back to if our city knew that it was not our, that it was private property now. Why do we continue to maintain this property? So that's the million dollar question, why?
Yes, sir. So may I run through my timeline that what my involvement as far as knowledge of this? You know, this act, I mean, this sales transaction took place. So I think I remember if it's maybe early two thousand sixteen or so, the city manager office came over to my. At that time, the Public Works Director requesting an assistant on putting together a legal description for that particular lot. So he was asking us if we can help them to prepare that legal description. So we have to get our contract, uh, professional land surveyor to put that detailed description for him. That's that's only we know about that area being, you know, potentially can be sold. But that that way before any council approval at all. When we have the legal description from the land surveyor, we gave it to the city manager office. And at that time, we don't have anything, any more information from the, at that point, whether whether it's sold or not. Um, even when it went to the council, I was in a council meeting at that time, but my Public Works Director, I have asked him. And he said like he didn't remember that he was informed of any, anything that you we sold already, or we should stopping. We should stop the the maintenance part of it. I also checked with my. Uh, maintenance staff right now, because I took over the maintenance in two thousand nineteen. So when I asked, I go back to ask my staff and said, were you guys aware of any of, like, you know, any knowledge of this being sold and we soon take care of this? And they said, no. So how I found out that we have sold this parcel to adjacent property. So last year, when we have a tree down, the uh, the management, the property manager contacted the city and say, hey. Your tree damaging our fence. And that's that's how we got to my to me as a maintenance. So I came out there and met with him. And I look at this and say like, I remember helping the city manager office for the legal description. So let me check and see whether this had been sold or not. So I went back and checked with the city clerk document, make sure that we have the right document, and it's, yes, it was sold. So why, that's when I came out and talked to him and say, no, this tree belonged to your property, to your, to your owner. And we, the city is not liable for this repair. And I told him that you need to put up the fence, so we can separate between the parks, the city park and the new, the property. That been sold back in two thousand sixteen. He said he will take that request back to the property owner. Months passed, he didn't, no, no respond. We have a small tree brand found out and it's public safety. I had to remove it. At this point, I'm asking the city clerk, do we have any contact on the property owner, so I can forward that information to? The code enforcement, because I don't have any authority to go after them, but code enforcement does. So that's how the code enforcement case has been opened up.
So when you, when that happened, when you found out, was that ten thousand square foot piece mowed again?
So we, yes, at that point, we continue doing that, because my my point was. Because I want to make sure it's been safe for the public, because it's it's kind of like a park. If if you look from the outside, it's it's part of the Liberty Park. So but my, and I tried to get with code enforcement to have the property owner to put up the fence. So we can delineate it, our park and their property, so we don't have any liability crossover. For example, if we have anything happen across, they say, hey, how come the city doesn't make the property owner to put up something there? So my goal is to work with the property owner as always and try to make him to do the right thing.
Counsel? Go ahead. I I would recommend, because we do have an investigation ongoing right now, that we not delve deeply into all the the facts. That are gonna come out as part of that investigation. Um, I would, that that would just be my recommendation. I, this is something that we could. In terms of making a demand on the property owner, have a discussion in closed session about. Um, I think that's the the proper way to handle it. I would also point out, I think it's good for the public record, that this land is still zoned. For park and open space use, both in the zoning and in the general plan designation. That's very important to understand, both um for the public to know that, as well as uh the property owners, frankly.
Yeah, you know, I I don't think it's fair right now, just born to um to grill the uh director of Public Works. I mean, I don't have a problem with his math. I mean, you know, you obviously you have an engineer degree. Math is not, uh, you can do apply folded, right? Um, put one hand tied behind your back. But you know, I I look at the number, I'm not a math genius. I don't have issue with the calculation. So I don't think it's fair for for the council to have a disagreement with his calculation. We can talk about it in closed session. You can, you can have this, it's a senior manager to order him to do something right now. But it's not fair for us to criticize him at this point. Give me, give me a second. Um, you know, just right now, this, to state what you want to do. With this item instead of focusing on the little detail that for then for a for a long time on such a. I don't, such a uh on this issue, it's being investigated. Um, and the 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 true will come out. Um, so, you know. How's like, uh, Jake, you have, when did you know that this park was sold?
About last year, when we, I I checked with the city clerk at that time for make sure that the documents showing that we actually sold it.
Okay, so, but no one give you the order not to maintain that part, right? Is that correct?
No.
Okay, so the reason you continue doing that, because it's 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 still a park, it's a, it's a piece of. Land that connect to the park and the the public's still using it, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And that was the reason that you, public safety, you continue to do it, because the cost was just so little.
Correct.
Fair statement?
Yes.
Um, is anybody, is there any one um told you not to do it? Not to have Public Works to go out and cut the grass?
Not at all.
Not at all, okay. Thanks.
Okay, well, here's the thing, uh, Councilmember Doe, is that I'm not grilling him. It's basically, we just have a disagreement on how he calculates the fees. We need to give him directions on how to calculate, and that's why I said, I don't, I disagree with how he used the, our, our. Uh, a contract, uh, you know, with the landscaper and and passing along that discount. And that's why it comes to five hundred and eighty-three dollars a year. And so I think I explained that. I don't want to go back to that. But that's what, and then I was, you know, going, I I think we should go by the weed abatement program price. And method of 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 calculating, you know, how much they owe. So, so you can do all that, and if you want to, Jake, if you could like, just, you know, work it out. And maybe you can talk to the city attorney and the C M, city manager, and come up with that um amount. And so that's, that's, that's what I want our city, our um city council to do is to give him direction. Which way are, which way are we going to go? We're gonna give the guy, the person discount, do you understand that? It's like that deep discount is, it really does not belong and should not be passed on to, you know. To to that new park owner, okay? But it should be, it should be the weed abatement program pricing. Okay?
So let me understand this. So you want to, the council to give direction? For the city to go after the park, uh, the the landowner? For maintenance?
Yes.
For the past six year?
Five years, yes.
Okay, eh, okay, and um, okay, I think the issue right now is, do we uh continue to maintain that?
No, then then that's the next thing, that's the next thing. We want to stop it.
We stopped in September this year.
Okay, okay.
Do we know the owners uh making effort to take care of it?
I haven't, I don't have that information, but I haven't seen any maintenance out there at all. Since I think there's a water has been turned off already, so there's not a whole lot of grass growing out there.
Oh, oh, okay. Okay, so right now, the, what do you want the council to do?
So just give uh Jake, the, I'd like to give you, um. I'd like the council to direct Jake to base his pricing on the uh abatement, weed abatement pricing. Which is seven hundred sixty-five dollars each time. And that would be.
You mean give it to the city manager direction?
Uh, yes, city manager, and um, and then add thirty-two percent admin fee. And then multiply that by twelve months. So I mean, I, we're, we're charging them for just once a month. But we 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 did it for what? You mow the grass every week, don't you? Every week, okay? But like I said, the reason I am raising, I'm making a stink from that, on that issue is because I don't think we should be charging him. Our discounted fee of five hundred and eighty-three dollars a year, that comes to twelve dollars a month, and that just isn't fair.
Can we, can we, can we agenda in the closed session to talk about this?
Yeah, because I think there's other like.
There's gonna be a lot of issue that I think we want to openly discuss this right now.
Fine with that, I'm fine with that.
That good? So can we do it at the next, next uh, the council meeting?
You come back with those numbers as far as you brought up the water costs. Um, the cost to water that area and what was the last thing you brought up to was water and something else?
Well, and tree trimmings that we did one in two thousand and eighteen.
All right.
For four, five years, are you sure you're keeping good records? I don't know if that's. But, okay, whatever it is that you you did, you can just bring it, you get all the calculations ready. Thank you.
I have a few questions, um, um, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, I know that we uh we deeply dive into this and talk.
Vice Mayor, I think you have a lot of echo.
Really?
Yes, you have a lot of echo.
Okay, uh, I know that we dive into this. Still echo, echo, what can I do? Um, how about now?
Okay, that's good.
It's better now, okay. I know that we dive into this and and deeply discuss about the issues and, you know, uh, uh. In the meantime, I know that we have uh the investigation that's going on. Although I do have a few questions for um the Jake, which is public director. Uh, I'm glad that you answered the question that you stop um the maintenance right now and a couple, couple months ago. Um, and I'm not worried, I'm not going over the amount, because the amount that you already repeated several times. That you divided uh me, you know, from the money that we pay. Uh, that's why it equate to the number of the dollar amount per year. I'm not doubting your your math, same thing as Councilmember Doe. Although I do uh have a question for you regarding to the legality of that. Um, the question is, um, we are asking for recovering the cost of maintenance from the property owners. Uh, for the last five years. My question to you is, um, do you know of, since the execution of the cells? Uh, do we have, or do we have any contract or mutual agreement between the city and the new owner? That we are going to maintain um the park and you have to pay part of it? Um, do we have any contractual or mutual agreement with that, or we voluntarily do it ourselves?
Um, part of words, we don't have any information about the cells of this, so we, I'm not aware of any mutual agreement or um contractual. With that at all, but like I said, we don't have any informa- information that this particular parcel has been sold, so that's why we continue maintaining for years.
If I could interject again, I think what we're doing here is we're negotiating against ourselves. Uh, the city's gonna have a position. We should have this discussion in closed session and.
Let's move to the for closed session then. I agree.
So you, uh, majority of council, you want to have a closed section right now? Okay.
We don't, we don't have this item on closed session? Direction will be at the next meeting, correct?
We don't have all the numbers together.
All right. Okay, so right now, I understand that a council concern, so I think staff, uh, they need to uh go back. And we need to reset our number and then bring it back in the closed section for the next meeting, am I right? Is that what it? Expect, all right, so there we go. So staff will uh bring the issue back in the closed section for the next meeting, okay, good. Uh, and city attorney, do we need a motion for this or no?
No, we don't need any, uh, there's not, there's no action to be taken, so I think we've concluded that, and we'll bring this back as a closed session at the next.
Right, okay, good. All right, so we move to the next item. Five point three, consideration of special event permit applications received from. Number one, Lido Sagon, that parade association in two, it is a going Westminster. That parade to hold the annual separate on Saturday, February fifth, twenty twenty-two.
He's mad, we I, we keep hearing a echo back. I don't know if it's vice mayor's.
Is that for me or?
I mean, are you recording or what is, what's going on over there?
Is that for me or from uh?
Just wanted to let you know that I was unmute, so shouldn't be come from me.
Okay, thank you.
So right now, we discuss about the issue of the parade. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor Ton, council members. Uh, what you have before you tonight is staff received two applications to conduct the tep parade. Uh, on Saturday, February the fifth, twenty twenty-two. And it will be the council's discretion on which applicant will lead the parade. Do you have any questions as it relates to the applicants process?
I think the majority of council, I think of us, we know uh to association very well. You know, I think uh two, about association, they they experience, they are capable. To organize a parade, you know, like the uh, the Lido Sagon Parade Association. They had like several year experience. And the Lido Sagon Westminster Parade Association, they they uh organized a really successful. I think in a nineteen, right, in a nineteen parade, excellent.
Yes.
So uh, I think that for two association, they have experience, yes. That is my opinion. So uh, I think that for two association, they have experience, yes. That is my opinion.
I have a question for um, Diana since, um, in the past, was it, wasn't there um? What, um, a committee? Or the tet parade, like what's, one council member was sitting on the committee?
I recall.
Representative, a representative of the council, I should say.
Yes, that would happened when the city was leading the parade. We created a committee that consisted of staff and community members. But when, in twenty twelve, when the city went through the fiscal stabilization plan and we did the layoffs. Um, it was determined at that time that if there were going to be future parades. Whichever applicant applied for the process would be responsible for the cost of the parade. So since twenty thirteen, um, it has been. The council has identified and selected a organizer for the tet parade.
So no, no council representative?
No.
Okay, thank you. And uh, that is your uh statement, or I think one of the applicants mentioned that he. Was doing it for successfully for seven years, eight years, something like that?
Yes, from twenty thirteen to twenty nine, uh, to twenty eighteen.
And any, any issues on that?
No.
Okay. Um, okay, thank you.
Well, this is uh, this is coming up again, I remember this uh. Discussion sites, twenty nineteen, right? Was that the last uh, last year that we have uh. Uh, the community have two tet parade, one in Gonna Grow and one in Westminster. And what the, you know, it's great, I enjoy both of them, um, don't get me wrong. So I was hoping that we're gonna do, we're gonna have that again this year, you know, two tet parade, one Gonna Grow and one Westminster. But um, you know, for some reason, the Little Saigon Tet Parade decided to um, um. Put up a tet parade in a couple uh, couple of days left, you know, not a whole lot to raise money and organizing. And building and all that stuff, but I uh. Um, yeah, I, I, I'd like to see, um, you know, and um. I, I'd like the council to approve the first come, first served, served application, you know. Um, so whoever turn it in first, uh, I will make a motion to approve that application because they are qualified. Um, more so one than more than the other, but uh, any, anyway, they already have something in the belt, but I, I think it's fair to uh. To approve the uh, application that's um, first come, first served in that uh, basic.
That's a motion for what is the uh, Little Saigon Tet Parade Association? Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, a second.
I'd like to uh have my input on, in that.
Vice Mayor, okay.
Yes, I, I remember that twenty nineteen, when uh, the two organizations submitted the uh applicant, application. And we actually um, asking, you know, the council trying to interview both. Um, applicants. And at the time that we uh, we uh have the uh open, discuss about the id- item. I believe that the Little Saigon Tet Parade Association uh representative wasn't there. And it was granted to Little Saigon Westminster Tet Parade. Um, I agreed that, you know, both uh with the mayor, that and, and, you know, both of these uh. Organizations, they are doing great job of organizing the event. Uh, we see that from uh the Little Saigon Westminster Tet Parade in twenty nineteen. Um. I don't think that, you know, right now, we are. Hmm, trying to approve or or chose, choose the applicant. Uh, to grant the, 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 the permit to. I don't think it's first come, first served, it's in the same time that they are putting in for the council to approve. So I, I don't think first come, first served would uh be the right decision in this. What I see is that in our community, you know, is so divided. In, in the last couple of years and, uh, you know. And especially in the twenty nineteen, there were two different uh, uh, tet parade. And I think that this is a great time, you know, for the two organization to work together. To unite it, if they can, if they are because of the community, then they should look into. The community and work together to unite this community. I, and I strong, I'm strongly uh advised, you know, both ca- uh applicants should consider that. And I also want to make sure, uh, you know, I, I'm so ask, the council should consider that. On behalf of their um, of their community. There's no doubt that Little Saigon Tet Parade Association can put up this event. And at the same time, there's no doubt Little Saigon Westminster Tet Parade can do that too. So if we have both of them. Working together, there will be a big benefit to our community. And I'm sure that our community will, you know, rally for that. With that, I will want, I want to make a substantive motion to that. And my much substantive motion is that, you know, uh, we should ask um, the two. Work together. But before I do that, let me ask uh staff for a few question, you know, few question about it. Let me, let, let me withdraw that uh, that uh substantive motion first. Let me go ahead and ask these question uh, uh, first. Uh, I don't know if staff know anything about uh state or county uh restrictive uh during COVID nineteen. Because I read the application, uh, you know, both app- application, one said that uh they will have ten thousand participant. The other will, will have fifteen thousand participants. And back a few months ago, I know that um, our city was thinking of putting up the event for. Uh, summer concert and to the point that we have to, uh, we have to cancel it. So, you know, don't take me wrong that I'm, I'm trying to, you know, push it away, but I'm, I'm more concerned of, you know, the COVID nineteen right now. I believe that the beginning of the meeting that we got uh from Robert Acosta, that the, the. COVID is increased even though it's low, but is increasing. So by having people, and I know that there are uh. Rules and regulation or restrictive from state and county, it's been changing, you know, day by day. So I don't know if staff have any idea of, you know, um, social distancing. Or um, if the health uh, county health department is agreed to for us to hold this event. Because I'm pretty sure that for ten thousand people, uh, for the, you know, for the uh, um. Uh, the, the. Uh, area of, of, of holding the event, I think they are, it is very crowded. And I don't know how we control, we do the crowd control to make sure that they are socially distancing. So again, um, staff, can you uh, give us more information on that? If you know of anything, I don't know Robert Acosta, um, Mr. Acosta still um. You know, online with us or?
Vice Mayor?
He can, yeah.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, um, Robert Acosta is no longer on the call, but um, I would be happy to address some of those questions. Um, the event is characterized as a, as an outdoor event and it is greater than ten thousand. And attendees based on the application, so under the Orange County Healthcare Agency standards, that would qualify as an outdoor mega event. Um, the county of Orange, uh, and cities within the county have always followed. Um, the cities have always followed the county uh recommendations. And the county is in line with the state recommendation, so I just wanted to make that clear, because I know we, we hear a lot about L A, we hear a lot about Long Beach. Orange County is in line with the state. Long Beach and L A, for example, have exceeded the state's uh requirements. So to answer your question, um, there is nothing in the Orange, Orange County Healthcare Agency's guidance. That would um, that would lead us to um conclude that you cannot have a parade. So there is nothing prohibiting a parade as it exists today with the Orange County Healthcare Agency. Um, there is, there is a lot of information on their website. We, as a department uh head, as a management team, we work. Uh, with the police department, with the emergency operations center, we, we work with H R, we discuss these matters on a weekly basis. We provide you with updates at the end of each week with the latest information. So there's, there's nothing that, that would restrict an, a parade from occurring. As it is described in these two applications. Um, okay, the confusion, I think, comes across in that, and in that the Orange County Healthcare Agency refers to a recommendation. Um, but it's not a guideline. So there are certain recommendations that can be found on the website, which are in line with the states. But there's nothing saying that a parade or an event under the category of outdoor mega event. Could not happen in the county, and they've been happening throughout the county. I think we're all familiar with different events that have happened. Throughout the county, music festivals, food fairs, things of that nature.
I'm sorry, no, sorry, if I could, if I could actually add specifically what those guidelines are in the state. Um, for outdoor events with ten thousand or more people, the California Department of Public Health recommends that attendees. Provide proof that they're fully vaccinated or have received a negative COVID nineteen test. Again, those are recommendations, they are not mandates. Um, you know, however, um, if, if these were to be conditions that the council would want to impose. You know, on the special event permits, it would require the applicants to um, to impose those and to apply. You know, those guidelines. So um, again, it just to, you know, again, they are recommendations, they are not mandates.
Okay, thank, thank you for that update. Uh, I think uh, it's very informative for us to know about it in the, in first to make the. Informed decisions. Uh, but I have another question, which is related to item six point one. Which is resolution reaffirming proclamation uh number twenty twenty dot zero one. And resolution, uh, resolution number four nine eight three, which declared the existence of local emergency. We've been doing that, we've.
Are, are we talking about six point one now or?
No, 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 I, I, I am preferring to that, uh, you know. I'm not talking about that, that item, we're not talking about that item. So with that, do you think that we are actually trying to ask. Uh, state that we declared that emergency and we, which because of the risk. Associate with the COVID nineteen.
So we're still, we, so we are still asking for the declaration of state of emergency, because again, that goes along with funding. Um, cities are also still being encouraged to declare those state of emergencies. Um, and again, i- it just goes back to funding. Outdoor events are still being held, um, just because that's the guideline that, you know, the state has. Um, you know, the, the state has allowed for those. Um, but yes, the state of emergency still exists, we're still declaring it. It's primarily for funding reasons, um, you know, but as well as the uh. You know, the virtual meetings, which was the other item that, you know, we were discussing. Um, it all does tie in together for, you know, it, COVID nineteen still exists. We're still in that pandemic phase, you know, we're not where we were last year necessarily, but um. But there is, you know, we, we aren't, we, we are still in some kind of a pandemic, so um. That's, so that's why we're still considering those resolutions. As far as the tie in with this particular event. Um, they're not necessarily related to each other in terms of what's allowed and what's not allowed.
Yeah, I, I am not saying it was allowed, it's not allowed, but I'm talking about the, you know, the reason that we said that we declare emergency because. I know it's for funding, but because of the COVID related.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the reason why I, I, I ma- I mentioned that. So with that, I, I, you know, I go back and um. Want to make a substitute motion to have both organizations uh to work together. On behalf of the community, I hope with uh, with this resolution, I mean with revolution. Uh, I know it's, it's, it's hard for the two to work together, but I ask, you know, because of the community uh benefit. Uh, and this is a good chance for, for the two to work together. Uh, I, I want to make a motion to grant the. The permit to both.
I think, uh, may I speak? Yes, I think that's a rec idea, I think this is a rec opportunity that we ask to, you know, organization. And in the past, they organize. The same event to sit down to work together and organize a really big, you know, parade. I think everyone in a committee, they, they go to feel really happy. I think this is the opportunity for the community to be united. And I think that everyone on the council, we want to see, you know, two organization organizing a really nice, outstanding. Parade, because you know, I don't feel really comfortable to turn down one or the other. And you know, I second the uh, substitute motion. Make my advice, Mayor, because you know, the two organization, they go to share the cost, you know, that really help them. And at the same time, we, that, you know, we have a really united parade in our city.
Mayor?
May I ask a question?
I have a question first before.
Please.
I have a question.
Yes.
My question is.
Need to make clear, we don't know if the two organizations are willing to work together, so I think.
Can I, I had the, I had, Mr. Mayor, I had the next one, so.
Yes, council member, menzo, yes.
Yes, my question was, well, first a comment and then a question for our city attorney. Um, I, I agree with both Vice Mayor and the mayor as far as the, you know. Them, the unity that it would create, um, you know, especially in the Vienna music community, there's a lot of division going on. And that's for me, that's sad to see, and that would be great for them to do that. But these are two private organizations and I don't believe as a city that we can force two private organizations. To legally work together, city attorney is, what, what's the deal there?
Yeah, I think what you need to do here is either find out right now if they're willing to work together, in which case you could proceed. Or what I would say is, indicate that you would like that to be the case. And we could return back at the next meeting to grant it to them, if they're both able to work out a plan where they can both do it. That that being the preference of the council, assuming that motion passes. Um, one of those two.
Okay, may I speak now? Okay, first of all, um, we gotta make a decision tonight because there's not much time for them. And I know that there's uh been talks of only two and a half months left and there are really tons of the essence. So we, we don't want to drag this on to the next meeting, so first of all. And secondly, as I want to ask if Mr. Fat Boy is still here, because he is the first applicant. Wanted to know if Mr. Fat Boy would just speak. And if it's okay for him to, uh, if I ask him a question to see if he would like to work with the other party. Or would he rather work alone? Could I ask him that question? If we could get Mr. Fat?
Yes.
We decide now.
Is the council agreeable to that?
Okay.
Well, we have to, uh, we have to ask both, uh, I believe that during the oral uh communication, both the said that they are.
Yeah, land would win, he's still online, so we ask.
I have a question, uh. Councilman, uh, when, you, you, are you on the, on that board director? You still not?
I'm not, I'm not.
You're not what went?
I am, I was helping them in twenty nineteen.
Well, you was a board member, right?
I am no longer, you know, a board member.
Did you resign? Did you submit a resignation?
Well, that, that would remember for that particular, okay, uh, for that, that particular. At this point here, I am ha- I have no interest of being. At this point here, I am, I have no interest of being part of it.
Oh, okay. You not, you are not a member of the Little Saigon Westminster Ted Parade?
I, I don't, I don't want to.
And you will not.
I was there to help them as, as I was a board director at the time.
Okay. Oh, you know, it's kind of, you know, this is very enlightening. I mean, you know, in twenty nineteen. And you know, if I propose that the two group working together, you know, someone is going to tell me, hey, there's a medication that I work thinking. But I can imagine, I mean, you know, this is crazy to, to listen to this and, and, and hearing you.
Cause man though, we just go ahead and move forward, okay? At this point here, I already stated myself already, so we, there is no point to go back. Let's go ahead and listen.
Interrupting me, that's very rude. I'm trying to make. Okay, you know, so. It's, it's, I think it's a great idea, actually. To, you know, to have two groups working together to have a Ted Parade. And to unite this. Community. But the question is, who's going to take the lead on this deal? I mean, you know, one Ted Parade have two bosses. Would, would that work? And. You need only one master, you know, we cannot have one event with two bosses. And they hate each other, they have their own people. And they used to attack each other, oh, they are attacking each other left and right. I mean, using the Vietnamese media. So, you know, I, I, I wondering how it's going to work out. I mean, it's, it's, isn't that a formula for disaster?
Could we just ask Mr. Fat Boy if he's interested in working together?
Well, you know what?
We have, we haven't decide, we haven't decide for which organization, why we have that, why we asking Mr. Fat Boy for. You know, it's look like that you already granted to, to Mr. Fat Boy. The permission, permission. We should ask both of them whether they can work with each other or not.
One person speak.
I'm saying I would like to ask Mr. Fat Boy, because I cannot talk to two people at a time. Mr. Fat Boy, could we get him on the phone or?
I think he's online, okay, so he's a boy.
He's in the waiting room. He's in the attendees.
So what does that mean?
They can bring him over. We're allowing him to talk.
I am just finally unmuted, so I cannot talk now before I can talk. Well, thank you for asking us. You know, as I had mentioned earlier, we have only two months and two, and less than two weeks. Take is on the fifth of February, the first of February, February first is the New Year's. So literally, we have only two months and, and, and a half. Now, in order to organize any new association or organizing team. It take tremendous amount of time to, to do team building. Who doing what and who have the authority over who on which task? Which is a daunting task, given that we only have two months and a half. Not only that, these two group have been at heart with each other and fighting each other. Ever since two thousand eighteen or two thousand nineteen. Recently, it, it, it is escalated to, to a much more difficulty level. Given the Guangxi monument, you see how much. Hatred and, and spin and bullying the other group. Pouring into, into ours. With that, I think the cooperation should be very, very, very difficult to, to achieve. I would be, I would, I would not want to put our organization at risk of something that. Would be a failure. And so I don't think that is a good idea. I myself cannot speak for the entire organization. So if you ask me that tonight, I won't be able to give you an answer. I have to go back to my board and to my committee to ask for their consent. And I just seemingly don't think we have enough time. Even with, even if the city council approve either one today. I think we don't have, we have very, very little times, and so I think every single day is, is a very important. Day for us to start working immediately. You're talking about raising a hundred fifty thousand dollars in two and a half, two months and a half. And put together a team to direct five thousand people in the parade. And ten thousand people or more watching it. You know it, the staff know it, so I, I don't think it is a good idea, given the situation now. I'm, 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 I'm done unless you would like to ask me any other question.
No, thank you.
Okay, since I, I make a substitute motion, may I ask Land Cook Win to voice your opinion?
Okay, can I ask, with the fat boy real quick before we hear the other side? Mr. Fat Boy, let me ask you that, do, do you have? The monetary readiness to. To make a deposit to the city if the council, the city council approve your.
Yes, sir, we have people that ready the loans, and in fact, we have a hundred thousand dollar on hand. Cash on hand to make a deposit tomorrow, Thursday morning, if we, if we, if that is what the council would like to see.
Okay, um, okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay, so my turn to ask. Direct, I mean, the, the organization headed by. I'm Mr. Land Cook Win. Please.
Mr. Landwood May?
Good evening, mayor and council member again. I will listen to the debate. I was an interesting idea. It's a new, very novel idea. It's high up. I'm very surprised that the council, we go into that directions. I think that's a good idea to give the community a. A chance to work together, and I agree with the fact that would be very difficult. Considering what has been going on and will continue to go on. But I think working together will allow two organizations to bring out the best for the best show. For the community would allow all the component element in the community to work together. I can see that by allowing the two groups to work together. I may shall may not be involved, just because of a personal commitment. But many member, the community organization, the supporter, the donor. They are out for the best of the community. They don't seem to care who's in charge, who doing what. Is it out to do what's best for the community? Then they dare to put up the best culture show. For the community. With that, to answer your question, you want to know, I think, yes, both community, both group can work together. I was just ask my, my member, board director and supporter, donor. To try please support this. Good, this event, to that we can put together a, a more united activity. For the best of the culture show for the community. But if we can do that, we need to have a say in the process. That, that we need to have a say so that we can encourage our member to do that. Because a member don't, don't want, I don't want to put them in the better position where it can't, they don't have a say. That, that why I support the council idea. If the, the council want to go that, that, that direction, and I can ask my member. On my, on the organization to support that idea and they will do their best. I know that we did difficult, as long as I myself is not involved in the directing process, that should be okay. Because most of the community member, they out to put up the best over the community. They just don't want to pay attention to who's who and which side they on things or. So I think to, to make the, the answer short, that possible, it's a good idea and I support it. Then hopefully the council will go in that direction, and that conclude my statement.
Okay, I will ask you the same question as council member do ask. Fat Boy, Mr. Fat Boy. Do you have financially ready, readily available if there, if the council approve? For you are both to be working together?
Of course, we are planning, been planning for this and we, we have it ready, we have a plan. May not be tomorrow, but within short time, we plan together, we can do that. We did last time, we were given a very short, two string time limit to do that. And we did, we did put it off and we did come out ahead and we did okay. But that, to answer your question, yes, we are financially able to do that.
Okay, and with that, I would say that both organizations wouldn't have any problem. Of, you know, financial wise, you don't have to worry about raising fund. Basically, you know, from Mr. Fat Boy, he said, he says have hundred thousand dollars on hand. And you, you said that you can, you can put it up and, you know, in a short period of time, there's no problem. I would say that money, money why is not a problem right now, except for working together. Am I correct, Mr. Land Cook Win?
Yes, I mean, this kind of event, the community, especially busy community, very supportive. Yeah, of, of that idea, because they really want to, to put up their effort to showcase the culture. The activity of this community. And we, from my experience, at least for, for one year, we did not have an apartment. Raising fund from the community. Especially, we didn't even charge the entry fee for nonprofit organizations. So we did write only on a busy community to do that, we were able to do that. And that was a different in our group, that we didn't charge the, the entry fee for many organizations. What they contribute to the event without raising fund on their own to do that. So that, that is possible, or we can do it that way.
Okay, council, legal council.
Want to vote, please, please.
Legal council, can I ask, I, I, I guess that, you know, the item came up. I think we need to discuss, we can rush into voting something that we, we have not have a chance to discuss about it. The council member Mezzo. So I.
Have the question for our city attorney.
Yes, city attorney. With the items at hands and we have to discuss about it, and then we make a substitute motion or make motions. How many do we have, are we limited? Or each council member or mayor are limited to make a motion or substitute motion? Because I, I, I just, just want to say that I want to make another motion, you know, on that too. So if there, if the substitute motion is foul, I can, do I allow to make another substitute motion? Because we are not.
Way, you may modify your substitute motion.
You modify the substitute motion right now.
Okay.
You, you wouldn't do two substitute motions on top of the main motion. If, if the whole thing fails, if yours fails and then the main motion fails. Then the council would consider new motions at that point.
Okay, I don't know what the mayor. Agree with me for when you second the motion already, but I want to modify the motion. I, I really want to have keep that this motion as, you know, to work together. But for now, let me, you know, after hearing both. I strongly want them to work together. But if they can't work together and they refuse to work together. And they don't really, you know, take the community into consideration. Then I recommend that we shouldn't approve. A either permit until they sit together and they, 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 they sit down together and work together. Because this is for the community. We are doing this for the community. And we both know that both organizations doing very well at this. And this is a chance, like, you know, we don't have this chance all the time. So I want to make a substitute motion that. You know, having those two work together. And then come back to the council. At the next meeting. I think that, you know, we, they wait until that this moment to turn in their application. Another meeting, it shouldn't be a problem for them. And especially the combined effort should have lessen the works that they already been done before.
One suggestion might be to, to grant it to the two organizations contingent. On both organizations sending notice to the city that they're willing to work together. But if they cannot, if it, then they would have to come back at the next council meeting if we don't receive notice from both of them. That they're willing to work together, that would automatically bring it back at the next meeting if they don't send the city notice indicating they can work together.
Very well put, very, very well put it, so I, I, I move with that, I move with that.
So Vice Mayor, make a motion as language. Recommended by city attorney and I second that motion.
The city attorney, the question I had for you earlier, and I don't know, I don't, I don't remember if you answered it or not. But can we legally force two private organizations to work together?
I don't think so.
No, you cannot. That's why the motion would be to grant it to the two of them, excuse me. Sorry, had to clear my throat. Would be to the two organizations contingent on them having to send notice to the city indicating that they can work together. If they don't do that, then they don't have authorization to proceed. And the permit would not issue and you'd have to come back at the next council meeting to grant it to one or the other.
Okay.
May I, may I say that we have seemingly have no time to wait. We need to hit the road running right now. Cannot just wait for, and the season.
Yeah, you know, Lung Win is mentioned is going to be very difficult. Time is a sense right now. I mean, this thing is ridiculous to have the two group that hate each other. It's not, it's not a, it's not a secret, everybody know, okay? Lung Win and, and, and Fat Boy, you know, they don't see eye to eye. And all that's, you know, when seeing the Quantry Monument, they never be able to sit down and work together. I mean, you know, what, what, what are you trying to do? To try to pull gasoline in fire? You know, you're going to creating so much division in this community by promoting such a ridiculous idea, okay? You know, it's give granted, permit to either one. I don't, I don't care. Well, just, you know. This place, okay, it is ridiculous. To, to, to entertain such a crazy idea that put the two agents together and make them work together. What were you thinking? That's ridiculous.
All right, so we have a substitute motion and a second for substitute motion on the floor. Call for question.
Okay, to be clear, this is on the substitute motion. To grant it to both organizations contingent on them providing notice to the city separately that they are willing to work together. Council, if that does not fail, or if that does not pass, then we would go to the primary motion.
Correct, all right, so we have the substitute motion and second substitute motion on the floor.
Does, does the council want to designate a date on when that letter is to be received?
ASAP.
ASAP. How about we say by December, December second, or I'm sorry, not December second, November twenty fourth.
Yes. Okay, so with the motion, the substitute motion and second for substitute motion on the floor, on the floor. Roll call both.
Council member though.
So this is for the two group to work together? Is that, that correct? Is that that correct?
Yes.
No.
It's, yeah.
And and let me interject real quickly. I know you were trying to set a date, Christine. We should have a date that's gonna give you enough time to put it on the next agenda.
November twenty fourth.
Okay, good. I just wanna make sure that.
So we have the motion, substitute motion and second substitute motion on the floor, please. Roll call both.
Council member Doe.
Uh again, no.
Council member Ho.
No.
Council member Monzo.
No.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
That motion failed. Two, three with council member Doe, Ho and Monzo voting no.
Alright, so now we go to original motion. The original motion that made by who?
Council member Doe and a second from council member Monzo.
Alright, so now we have the original motion on the floor.
And that was to approve the Little Saigon Tep Parade Association as the twenty twenty-two Tep Parade Organizer. So council member Doe.
Uh yes, and thank you for the Little Saigon Tep Parade to put up the parade for this year. It's been a long time since we have fun, so thank you.
Council member Ho. You're muted.
Yes.
Council member Monzo.
Um. I wanna, yes, but can I say that? You know, I like the idea of them working together, but maybe. Next year, um with extra time, kind way ahead of time that they, something possibly can happen. But with this short amount of time they have, doesn't seem to work, so yes.
And vice Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Uh I would say that, you know, if they they have enough time to do themselves, but uh right now they turn it, they turn it in. And and the motion is to grant both of them, you know, that they can start right away. But they choose not to, so my uh vote is no.
And Mayor Ta. That motion carried three, one, one with Vice Mayor Nguyen voting no and Mayor Ta abstaining.
Alright, uh next.
I'm sorry, can I uh can I change my vote there?
Yes, go ahead.
I meant to abstain my vote instead of saying no.
Okay, there we go.
So that motion still carried with a three, zero, two vote with Vice Mayor Nguyen and Mayor Ta abstaining.
Alright, so uh next item, consideration of project Home Key Program.
Honorable mayor and members of the council, I'm Debbie Carita, the interim community development director. And I'm pleased to provide an overview of this agenda item. At the request of council member Monzo, information on the project Home Key Program is being provided to the mayor. And city council for discussion and to provide direction to staff. Since the beginning of the pandemic, the city of Westminster has employed a number of strategies. For addressing the pandemic's impact on our community. One of those approaches was to work with the state and the county. To identify resources, strategies and programs that would aid in addressing the issues associated with the pandemic. As you may recall, Project Room Key was one of the programs that was offered through the state. Project Room Key provided a short-term solution for housing the homeless population. Who are particularly vulnerable to the pandemic. The state then followed by developing Project Home Key. Which is designed to quickly provide permanent affordable housing solutions. Especially for those persons that are experiencing homelessness or who are at risk of becoming homeless. As an alternative to new construction. Project Home Key awards grants to cities and other public sector agencies. To acquire and rehabilitate a variety of existing housing types. Or to convert existing commercial properties such as motels. For affordable housing use. Currently, Project Home Key is in its second round of grant funding and additional rounds are expected. For a project to be successful in this highly competitive application process, the project needs to be shovel-ready. Because the capital funds are required to be spent within eight months of the grant award. Additionally, the city would need to secure a collaborative partnership with one or more local development partners. Currently, the city of Westminster does not have a shovel-ready project. Or the partnerships or the identified funding sources that would be necessary. In order to submit an application for this round of Project Home Key grant funding. At this point, staff is looking for direction from the mayor and the city council. On pursuing partnerships for potential projects to meet the criteria for applying for future project. Home Key Grants. That completes my presentation. I'm happy happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Any question or concern from member of the city council?
Um, yes, thank you, mayor. Thank you, Deborah. Yes, I mean, this, as you guys all know, um how how difficult the homeless situation is in. In our city and our our neighboring cities, our state, um. I mean, every day, you know, we're out there and see the 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 effects of homelessness. It has on the people experiencing homelessness as well as. Our residents having to um see that and. And it affects their quality of life as well and and. And I think we owe it to our residents, we owe it to. Uh the folks experiencing homelessness and potential for homelessness. For us to really take this serious and do the best to. Do our really best that we can to help alleviate the situation. I know this is difficult, which is because it's hard, doesn't mean we should not try. I think partnering with the developer. Uh is our best opportunity to do something. As you all know, our financial situation. You know, handicaps us from doing. Doing something on our own. Um, this is some state funding. That we can try to acquire. Uh by the way of um. You know, hopefully partnering partnering with some developer to do something about it. So I really would, you know, hope the council members uh. Really look at this situation and I know some of you, some of you have. Um addressed concerns about this in the past. Um. There's a window with the grant funding that this short, this, you know, it's a time timely issue. Um, but I think we need to keep this on our on our radar, keep this on our on our front burner, as you say. And 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 really push. To for us to do something about this. It's really important, really important issue. It affects all us all. And I just hope that council can really support this and 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 direct our. Our staff to, you know, try to find a partner. To part uh development partner to continue to find ways to for us to address the situation in our city. Our uh police department. On every day is out there doing the best they can. They, I wanna thank them. Our police department, I don't think they got the recognition they deserve. Um, they were out there recently with partnering with Garden Grove and CHP and. I think Caltrans as well, trying to help some folks. That are living on up the, you know, Caltrans property. So I think our police department for that, uh Commander McCormick has been. Doing a really good job. He also, him and the. Our two homeless liaison officers have been really uh focused on this and attending, we attended a. Our faith-based homeless task force type called Westminster, Love Westminster. So they've been out there really. Really trying to do what they can, you know, at all different levels. I just hope that our council can have the same focus. And really try to do something and and hopefully that we can motion to direct our staff to. Look for a trade, a partner to trade, uh develop something possibly. Thank you.
Alright, any other question from member the council?
Uh I just have a a question for clarification. Staff, can you can you explain a little bit more about the application period uh for this route is underway? Uh, what application that we are talking about here and uh. You know, until it's May second and or all the funding is exhausted, so that. That means we already open up the for application for people to apply for it or. Am I understand correctly?
Yes, the applications are currently being accepted. Uh, uh the initial uh round of funding is on a regional basis. And uh that has to be received by January thirty first of next year. And Westminster is in the Southern California region. Which has about a hundred and twenty-three million of the one point four five billion that's available statewide. Uh and then uh after February first, any applications that are received. Will uh it it will depend on how much funding is left over and it's combined uh with what's available statewide. And they'll continue to take applications until May, uh but that it it's on, it may be exhausted. You know, it depends on how many applications they receive. Does that answer your question?
No, not yet. Uh may I ask, when did you open the the application?
The applications were, uh I began began, I think. Um, in September, but I'm not sure.
September. Uh and he and I helped me to understand. I thought that the this item that you bring to the council will provide. The direction to approve that you can uh to pursue with the dev- developer for potential projects. So I don't know, uh, I'm helping to understand. I still don't understand, you know, we are, you are asking us to approve this one. But at the same time, the application opened up already in September that we don't know about.
So no, so if I if I can interject, so the application period that you're looking there, sorry, um the application period that you're looking there. We are the applicant. The city is the applicant. So we're we're applying essentially for the grant funds. So, um, yeah, so we're. Sorry.
Hey, what's going on?
I don't know, I I thought I heard.
So sorry, go go ahead.
No, it's okay. Um, so I was saying, so no, this application period, um it's not our application period. We're not accepting applications of any sort. Um, this is for us to apply. For the Home Key Program for the for the funding. So we are essentially the applicant, because we're competing with other other entities that would be essentially applying for these monies. So, yeah, this this is not the application for peer for any for people who are, you know, going into whatever development. That's. This is application just for.
Sorry, I misunderstood the question. That was, those are the state's uh application guidelines.
That's on the first come, first surfaces. So I mean, time is of the essence and the municipalities or entities that have. They're competing for grant mon- grant money as as we all we all do for different. Um, different monies that many cities go after first roads for. You know, all sorts of things and 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 a lot of cities are competing for these same money. And and we would be competing as well and. If our best shot to do something to address the homelessness comes by way of us. Securing some state money, a grant money. We wouldn't be, we're not applicant, we're not, we're not doing it for somebody. We're we're asking. To partner up, find a partner that we can apply for state money. That's the whole thing. So.
That's why I'm asking for clarification only. That's all. Thank you very much for uh answering the questions.
Yes, so I have another question for staff. So basically, are we only one? Who will submit application or we will to partner with other agency?
We would partner with um other, not not, well, it may be possible. I. Um, I would have to check if the if the county or or another agency would partner on a a joint project. Um, because, but uh. My understanding is that this is for local governments or other uh local government entities. So.
So based on your experience, that if we partner with other agents, local agency, that do we have a better chance or we rather apply by ourselves?
It does depend on the structure of the of the project. Uh there are a number of criteria that that. Uh are um identified and the type of housing, the uh amount. That is allocated for certain types of uh services, things like that. Uh so there are a number of things that we would have to um. Uh include in the project in order to be successful. Um, and what what I was suggesting is that even if we aren't ready at this. Stage, because they have to be shovel-ready, um there are going to be additional um uh. Grant rounds of of this type of grant awards. So if we have council direction to uh try to move forward for fi- uh identifying potential sites, potential. Um, partners, um that that is what we are are seeking tonight.
I appreciate that. So with that, I move that city council, we go to uh. Do whatever uh with our staff recommended. To ask for funding from the state, I think.
I second it. I second it.
Alright.
Thank you, mayor, vice mayor, for, I think, putting the focus on an important issue like this. Um, I think we, like I said, we owe it to our residents and we owe it to. Those folks who are really struggling out there in the streets and hopefully we can make a difference in in their lives.
Uh one quick question. Uh is it, this program, is this the same thing that the Motel Six uh site that we're talking about several months ago?
I am not familiar um with uh with what that project entail, but if it.
As I was mentioning, something about that particular site of the Westminster and the uh. Uh Westminster Cafe, I think.
I think that was a a city, uh city inner city manager.
County, yeah.
Other county.
From what I vaguely recall, um and and this is, you know, unfortunately I wasn't involved, but. Um, it was a a potential um four-year project with the county. And it was for, I don't remember if it was transitional housing, um or if it was supportive housing, but. I I you're correct. There was some, there was some discussion about that property.
That, I remember Alexa brought it up, so, okay, alright, cool, thank you.
Alright, so uh.
Okay, and that was to have staff pursue, that was a motion made by Mayor Ta and a second by Vice Mayor Nguyen. And that was to have staff pursue the Home Key Project. So council member Doe.
Yes.
Council member Ho.
Yeah.
Council member Monzo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Alright, next item, five forty-five, request to discuss comment made by Vice Mayor in. Mayor and during council meeting.
Yeah, I asked to have this item um to be discussed in this uh meeting. Um. I'm not sure if the uh every everyone was aware, but during the last council meeting. There's some heated exchange uh between um. Vice Mayor Nguyen and Councilwoman Kimberly Hall, um when we're talking about the nepotism. Policy. So, um you know, and and a lot of them, and doing the public comments, a lot of uh community members. Have voiced a concern about uh Vice Mayor Nguyen's behavior during meeting and then. Especially he, the the words he commonly use, crap. You know, um. When he was asked, I mean, I I and then it's it's a, it's very disruptive and um. I was deeply concerned about um Vice Mayor Nguyen's behavior during the meeting. And I have, uh I got opportunity to follow some of his comment in the Vietnamese media during uh several interview. Uh when asked, uh. Uh when he was asked about, you know, the the word crafts that were, uh he was constantly mentioned during uh. Council uh meeting lately and he was saying, translating to a balap, you know. Uh which is not accurate. Crafts according to the uh uh internet dictionaries mean human excrement. It is, you know, we, everybody know, understand that. And for you to use that kind of language during the meeting is not acceptable. During the last meeting, um. Uh vice him, I mean, uh Councilwoman Kimberly Hall call you, use a Vietnamese language and uh. Call you ma heng, may la thang heng. I mean, it's 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 wrong. It's wrong for Councilwoman Kimberly Hall to use that kind of of language, uh in Vietnamese to call you names. But uh as an elected official conducting an official um business. Me- meaningful uh for the city, you should not have respond and call her. You hang too, that mean you a coward. And that is not acceptable. And I understand that they's um. His behavior had caused a diff- a deep, really deep division with the other members of the council. Uh I happened to read in one of his email in in Vietnamese, he um. Spelled uh council member, um Ma- uh Kalop Manzo. Uh in Vietnamese, mang ra, I mean barbarian. And I have forwarded that email to. Yeah, I did, I, you know, for some reason, some of the com- member of the community has forwarded me that email. Because I was not uh the original recipient of that email, but I was forwarded that email. I happened to read read it. And I um brought it up to the attention of um. Councilmember uh Manzo. Um you know, uh the the my concern is the. The Vietnamese language is always a problem uh with elected official in this uh city. Uh whatever business conducted in the city and council meeting in in English. Will totally twist us when the most, you know, the elected official went on the Vietnamese media. Um and just have a a complete lie. I mean, they say, they thought that. It's just lies and lies and lies. And I heard that's a a lot from lately from um Mayor Tretta and uh. Uh Vice Mayor Nguyen. I want to bring it up to the attention of a city council during this public meeting so that we can consider some. Adjustment. And to address its uh his behavior. I get a floor out to the other council member.
Alright, so any other, any other comment from other council member, if not, invite the Vice Mayor?
Um I'd like to say something.
Councilman Manzo, okay, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, uh it's very unfortunate, you know, what's going on, it's. Not good for our city for us to have our our council such so dysfunctional. So the such disrespect. You know, when you, when somebody disrespects another person. They're also disrespecting themselves, you know, they're. They're not really being honoring themselves when you call name call and. Especially on a language that the person they're attacking doesn't even understand. I mean, that's pretty. I don't know, how, pretty disgraceful, I think, it's a. I mean, you wouldn't want me to doing it the other way around, where I'd be calling somebody names in a language you cannot understand. Think it's very unbecoming of elected officials that 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 uh. That you carry yourselves that way. That also had an issue with Vice Mayor Nguyen, I think it was extremely, extremely disgraceful. When you were attacking an applicant, a member of the public, the way you did. Totally was shameful and really embarrassing for our. Our city council, our city, that we you would treat somebody so in such disrespect. I just don't understand how. How somebody does something like that. Um if you want to treat me bad, you want to call me names, yeah, that's fine. But when you treat somebody from the member of the public with such disrespect. You just don't do that. You know, when somebody. You know, running for office and getting elected, it is, it's not a small feat. It's difficult, you you've all done it, mayor has done it for probably longer than any of us have. But you know, when you come, when you get to that. If you're so lucky to have, you know, run a campaign and got elected and. You're representing your community, you know, that's, it's a big accomplishment, but with that big accomplishment, it comes with. A great deal of responsibility as well, that we represent our community with honor and dignity. Being a. At first, Vietnamese-American mayor, it's a big deal. So, you know, it's a big accomplishment, but when you have such a divided. Community, you know, like I said, it comes with big re- big responsibility to do something like that. It's a big accomplishment. You know, happy that you you were able to accomplish that, but. So far, it's just been, since our cities become so divided the last few years. And our, the way we carry ourselves here is not, we're the, we're the example of the community. And we can't even get along here in our city council, how can we expect our community to come together? Especially to me, this, we just had an uh. Two Vietnamese uh organizations trying to put together this, a really honorable and special event for the community. And you heard the testimony from them and it's like, can't even get along. So we can't get along, how can we expect? Someone else to get along as we were all. Vice Mayor had a good idea, hey, can we try to have them work together? Yeah, that'd be great. But if we can't even work together, how do you expect somebody? A private organization, I thought, to work together. Uh it's just very, very sad and this was, very sad for our our city, the way that. Some of someone in the council, right now the subject is the Vice Mayor, how you disrespect. Members of the community and you disrespect members of the city council. It's very unbecoming, it's very sad. I don't have a way to understand what's being said about me and the Vietnamese community, the Vietnamese media. I mean, how how is that honorable? You want to have a debate? Just have a debate. Don't just go on one side and totally spin the truth of what even happens here in council. I guess, be honorable, you want to talk, let's talk. That's all I had to say.
Alright, I want to thanks uh Councilman Manzo for mentioning about the community. Regarding uh. Regarding the Vice Mayor, however, you know, I I want to show you all, you know, tonight from the Vice Mayor. He did make a motion to give opportunity for two different organization. To be united, to work together. I think all of us, we understand that, you know, there is really divisive community. You know, it's not a secret, you know, we all aware of that. But I tried to say that. I mean, it's not not a, they tried to defend for the Vice Mayor, but I mean, he did, he did show his caring. He want to give off us, five us, an opportunity. To show our leadership to the community, even the two organization totally different in belief or whatever. However, at least five us, we want to show them that, oh, okay, the past is the past. Right now, the council, we want to see that only one parade, but to be organized by two different organization. And I appreciate the Vice Mayor, that his idea. That show me that, you know, he. He want a community to be united. So I mean, if, you know, any of you say that he didn't care about community, he, you know, talking about community, I do not agree. I respect, you know, your opinion, but I do not agree that. Because among five us, he been, he been along with the community for like more than three decades. And he been organizing a lot of event, he been helping a lot of organization, association in a community. Long time before he get elected on a council. Alright. So Vice Mayor, you want to speak?
Yes, um first of all, I I I I wanted to thank uh Council Manzo. To mention about, you know, working together. We always want to work together, council member, Manzo. First of all, let me uh make it clear that I did not treat the member of 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 uh community with disrespect. Okay, I want to make sure that I get all the inform, the, you know, information so that I can make. You know, I, you know, at that point, I want to approve for him to instead of for. I I didn't say that I don't approve. Or I completely rejected the 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 decision, okay? So I just want to let you know that I don't. And I want to make it clear, I don't treat, I I didn't treat them with disrespect. Secondly, that you telling me that, you know, I've been rough with you and, you know, let me ask you. That um, you know, you've been to, in at at this council meeting at least three times. That you telling me that I went on the Vietnamese television or radio talking bad against you. And I've been asking you repeatedly that, you know, show me the evidence. Tell me when, where and what. Until this date, I have not got anything from you. And right now, I encourage you to continue to go and find if there is anything that I talk about it. And bring it back to the council and discuss about it, okay? I'll be frankly with you that I ask you to go and look for it. You know, last, I know that last uh council meeting, you know, the three of you want to censor uh council, I I mean, me and and the mayor. And, you know, we 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 said that those reasoning that you you uh you are trying to censor us. Until this day, you don't, you don't can't even come up with, you know, any evidence. That's why right now I haven't seen the 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 sensor that you 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 put up to censor both me and 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 the mayor. Now, getting back to, um you know, uh council member though. I did look into the dictionary, if you go into dictionary and put in C R A P, crap. It is something that I said malap, yes, it is something here. Something of extremely, extremely poor quality. Okay, that's what it is. The way I want to refer, that's something that is really. You know, to me, it's ridiculous. I don't think it's it is, it is not the way to get to go. We are wasting our time, we are wasting the 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 taxpayer money for nothing like today. To be honest with you, today, uh council member though, I think is childish. For you to bring this item to the meeting. I am sure the city have more important issues that much needed to be discussed. But here we are, let's talk about it once and for all. First, I think that you should review your behavior both at the council meetings and out in the community. And I mean it, ever since you came to the council, what did you do? Especially during uh twenty eighteen, when you first came in. Feel free to ask around how people feel about you. Yes, council member though, for the record. It was an email that I sent to the group of people that I know. And I did not, and I repeated, I did not intend to call name or make any personal attack on Councilmember Manzo. What I referred were the actions by the group of three members in the majority. If that statement was misunderstood as a personal attack or offended. You in any way, Councilmember Manzo, I apologize to you. Though I did it, I did intend to alert the group in the email. That the level of barbar, of the level of the barbaric, sorry about that, actions. That we are, I can't even pronounce, that's right, because I don't use that ever. That we are facing the city hall with this majority members today. This trend of barbaric action will not stop. Unless the majority reconcedes its action in the trend they are pursuing right now. First, they literally, you guys really really killed the Quang Chi Monument project. While at the same times stating to the community that they supported it. Even until today, you three still saying the same thing without shame. It is very barbaric, barbaric to lie to the community and continue to do so. When we and mayor. When we, the mayor and I tried to explain to the community of the fact. The majority tries to censor me and the mayor for just stating the truth as we see it. You know, just an example, like, you know, using the mayor, using the the taxpayer money to, for the the. The project that, you know, Quang Chi Monument right now, that see it, the, you know, heading. Well, she said, no. Well, we used the staff conducting the 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 meeting. We are not using the taxpayer money. I believe that something mentioned ear- earlier, that fourteen hundred for 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 meetings, something like that. So to this date, you still don't have any proof or evidence of any statement. That is forced to support its motion for censor. How can you try to charge someone with any wrongdoing without first presenting. Presenting any evidence for it. It is very barbaric in every sense of the word, of the word. Now, second, you three tried to expel the mayor's office from the city hall. Without any plan for such action. You have not done any study, review, hearing of comments from this app for such drastic action. It's very barbaric for the way you are doing it. It's even more barbaric if people are convinced that you did so only for the purpose of retaliation or humiliation against the mayor. I am elected to serve all resident of this city and I am a member of this community. I will speak up to defend my community when I need to. I will continue to do so. To censor me for saying that is very barbaric in its true sense of the word. Third, the act of censoring me just because you disagree with me is also very barbaric itself. Worse than that, you prevent me from stating the truth and force me to join in the lies with you. It's, is very barbaric if you try to do that. So, so much for barbaric nature for the things that you do on this council. I will speak, I will stand by and join in your action regardless of how many censors motion you throw at me. I will continue to speak up the truth regardless of what you can come up with. Finally, I wanted to remind you, Councilmember Do, that we are now living in the US, the city of Westminster, all American city, not a Ho Chi Minh city as you have called it before. The First Amendment is a freedom of speech. I am free to speak up my mind, you are free to speak up your mind as long as you convey the truth and not humiliating others. So, you know, with that, I want to, you know, to say that I am myself, I, I will speak out the truth. Now, as far as the community, you know, saying that, that I am saying loud, first frustrated, let me tell you that those who know me, that I'm speaking loud not here, not only here at the meeting, but also speaking at the community event. I speak with passion and saying, you know, and I have said that before on this, at this council. I apologize for, you know, for being loud, but at the same time, you know, I am trying to see, you know, whether we can do something that I don't know, it's, it's out there trying to, to, you know, lower myself. But, you know, like I'm saying right now, I don't know whether, you know, people saying that I'm frustrated or, or, or being loud. I don't know how loud is out there, I can't hear, I don't know, but that's the nature that I am. I am speaking from my heart, I'm speaking from the, you know, from, from, with a passion. So if, if the, the voice or the loudest that, that I'm talking right now, that offend anybody, I apologize for that. I hope that, you know, we can, I can somehow get myself, you know, better in term of lowering my voice and, and, you know, that, that, that's what I'm gonna do. But, you know, I, again, I have stated, I will say it again. If you are offend because of my voice, because of the, the, the compassion, the, the passion that I am presenting, then I apologize for that. But what I'm saying is, I want to come, to convey the truth. The truth, and, you know, because I'm a member of the community, I want to speak out, you know, what is not right, so that the community knows what need to, you know, they are informed about it. That's all, Mayor, thank you very much for the time, thank you all for listening.
So we think the Vice Mayor already said pretty well, and I hope that a council member don't go back and forth for this kind of item. I hope that from now on, you know, every council member, we give respect to each other, because, you know, for the few next item, we want to approve like, like a code of conduct, the code of ethics, and, you know, we hope to show, I mean, at least a respect to, you know, your colleague. So we hope that in a council, we going to move on. There's an opportunity for the council to raise and, or concerns, but I hope that from now on, hey, you know, at least in a council meeting, we, we show respect. That is my suggestion, but it's still up to the council. I hope we move on, because we have, you know, several item, and, you know, I don't want, you know, we end up until like one or two AM. That's why I
If no one want to make any comment, I wanna respond to what
Please, yes, of course, but, you know, don't try to go too long and go back and forth, you know, I hope.
You know what, you know, sex peers say that the word is a, is a stage, right? It's your state, Councilman Nguyen. You know, everything that, that come out of your mouth, or whatever you say, is always stage, is always theatrical, is always something that's not real. I mean, you know, you and, and you and the mayor lately has been into every single Vietnamese media drumming up that, hey, you know, I got kicked out, the mayor got kicked out the, his office. I mean, it's, it's make it sound like, we don't, I don't have an office. Mayor Truyta, that's the biggest lie. You still in your office, nobody throw your stuff out the door. And you drum it up and calling for you to work on the recall. And that's what you're trying to do, and it's just very low, that is not right, okay? We, we, we're talking, we're passing a, a, a policy to protect the, the city employees in an accident with the elected official. And one of those clause in that policy was like basically the, the office of the mayor and the city council shall be kept separate from city hall, and that's it. Okay, we did not go into detail how to interpret that, what does that mean? We're gonna move, you know, your office gonna be moved? No, no, we never talk about that. And you went, you and, and, Councilman Charlie Nguyen, and, you know, go out on the the Vietnamese media, pay talk show and dramatize everything, crying, say, I, this is, this is the first time ever happened in the entire world that, I'm, I'm the mayor, got kicked out of my own office in city hall, you know, please help, please hide a recall. It's embarrassing, it's so divisive, it's so fake, you know? It is so low as an elective official, and you do, do that in Vietnamese, okay? And, you know, the Vice Mayor Nguyen, you just mentioned it, you know, we, we kicked the mayor out of his office. No, his office still in, in city hall. You know, his, his office never been moved, and we never talk about, you know, how we interpret data particular clause. And it's just, it's, it's just, it's just crazy. You know, Councilman, Vice Mayor Nguyen, you're talking about honest, you're talking about true, you're talking about working together. It's all about lip service, okay? You went under the Vietnamese media, what do you do? You know, you, you saying the council member, uh, Callum Menzo, Housewoman Kimberly Hall, and me conspiracy together, working together as a gang to, to attack you and the mayor, to destroy the community, you know, to work with the Vietnamese communists and to, you know, to destroy this kind of Vietnamese refugee community, uh, overseer here in, in Westminster. It's all, it's nothing but lies and lies and lies and lies and lie. Nothing come out your mouth is, is truthful, it's all fake, it's all acting. And, and that is, that is a problem, okay? There's nothing I can do about it. Ta, because you got elected by the people. But you as a mayor, the majority city council, Vice Mayor, majority city council voted to have you as a work representative as a Vice Mayor. We can censure you, we can remove you from that post. Okay, till you walking around saying, I'm Vice Mayor, Charlie Nguyen, oh, I'm this, I'm that. I'm calling people to, uh, re-sign the recall. This, this, it's, it's, it's nothing but lie, this community has suffer enough, because most of the things you say in Vietnamese. And the majority of voter in the city have, cannot understand English. And you dominate, you two dominate the Vietnamese media, you have access to Vietnamese media anytime. You know, myself and other kind of council member, they, we have no access to the Vietnamese media, it just costs money, yet they know who to get in. And we, we cannot compete with that. We have no media to combat those lines, as it becomes a huge problem. Okay, you know, just, just reading the definition of that, the word crap. C R A P, and you can't even finish the whole thing. You know, you've just read the first definition of that particular word, this, which is like something of extremely poor quality. Yes, that's correct. But what about number two, excrement? Okay, the verb defecate. Okay, you didn't, you didn't, did not even go down to all of the definition. You can't even say that. And you keep telling me every, I'm, I'm telling the truth, I'm honest, I'm this and that. You go to church. And that's embarrassing. You know, if no other council member want to say something, I will make a motion to, uh, remove Vice Mayor from that mayor's, uh, Vice Mayor position until the next appointment.
I don't think that's legal, because, you know, number one, it's not on agenda, and, uh, let me respond to your comment, Councilman Do, and honestly, I don't want to go back and forth. Majority of you make a decision to remove, to separate my office, physical office from the city hall. How long you been on the city council? And you said that, you know, you didn't remove my physical office from the city hall. I mean, like, what is happening here as an elected official? When we approve any proposed policy, that what it mean? So you need to read the ordinance at a city attorney. What does that mean? You didn't vote on it. And in a, in a proposed ordinance, in a proposed policy, you majority vote to, to separate my physical office from the city hall, and you said that, oh, I didn't remove. I mean, as a council member, as elected official, when we make a decision, when we, we approve a policy, that mean the policy. So don't try to bring another, bring another issue, because honestly, I don't want to go back and forth. And you thought that a Vice Mayor lied to the community? I want you to go to the community and ask the member from the community, what would they think about you, what would they think about the Vice Mayor, what would they think about me? So you need to be fair to yourself too. I mean, if we go back and forth like this item, it going to end up like a few hours. So I want to stop right here, and I don't think, but the city attorney more than welcome to verify my comment. I don't think, you know, you could able to, you know, make any, any motion to remove the Vice Mayor title, city attorney, am I right? Because it's not, number one, it's not on agenda.
Yeah, I think you need to agendize that.
Yeah.
The items to, to discuss comments made by the Vice Mayor in the media. But that, you know, you could certainly ask for that to be agendized.
Okay.
I have, I have another question to
Okay, the Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor want to speak, because you, you spoke twice, Councilmember Do.
I'm, I'm, I'm asking, I'm not talking, I'm, I'm asking the leader of council and, and the city manager, interim city manager. I believe that we passed the ordinance or, you know, the resolution, something like that, that we, the item, if the item brought up over and discuss about it, then we are not going to be able to bring that item back in the six months. Okay, now, let me remind you that it, it is not too long ago, probably about two months ago, you are the one who, who arched, archedized the items that remove me from their Vice Mayor position. And then what?
Can I respond?
Motion, you make a motion about it, and there is a second about it, and then finally, you withdraw about it. You withdraw that motion. So basically, we already brought that motion not too long ago, probably about two months ago. And there is a policy that you cannot bring that item back.
If I may speak, I do remember that we voted that we can bring it back if we have a majority.
No.
The back, majority vote, is that right?
It was not.
Not arguing, please, I'm asking Christian, asking the CM.
Yeah, Christie, I'm not sure, I, I don't recall a policy that doesn't allow you to bring it back. That's, I may be wrong about that, but
Well, the policy is saying that we have the agreement that, uh, when we, uh, remove that majority rules, which called me to say that Westminster is officially Ho Chi Minh City, by the way. Vice Mayor Nguyen, because your dictatorship decision. And by the way, that's a freedom of speech. And, you know, the last, uh, last council meeting, when I brought up this issue, I withdraw my motion, there's no vote. So technically, it doesn't qualify as the motion fail. So legally, I can bring it back. And Christian, just so you know, the, the last sentence on the item number five point five, it say the city council to consider formal censure. Okay, so that, this is an actual item, okay? So we can consider, um, censure to make sure that this kind of behavior from any of the council member should not be tolerated, because it's embarrassing to our community to have a, a, a person who have the majority of, of the council trust to carry the title Vice Mayor and act and behave in such a unacceptable kind of unbecoming.
Nice interject real quick. First of all, I want to say, I guess, I don't know if all of you or just two of you. Everybody, you guys all make, it sounds really good when you say it, especially the Vice Mayor for all American city. Well, the question I have for you is like, if, if you truly, then you say you're gonna represent the whole community. So why come you guys never go on, on, on a English language media and say what you say? Why do you only do it in Vietnamese language media?
To answer your question.
And I'll answer it when I'm done. And Vice Mayor, everything you say, it's always just spinning the truth. Councilmember Do, back whenever that was, few years ago, said about, now we're gonna be Ho Chi Minh City. And you, I know you're not a dumb person, you and the mayor very well know that that is sarcasm. Sarcasm, if you don't know it, I'm sure you do know what it means, but then you go on Vietnamese media and then spin it to say that, that he wants to change the name of the city to that. You know you're, you know you're lying, is I know you know what sarcasm means, but your community that does not speak English as a first language does not know what even sarcasm means. And you know that, okay? I know you're not a dumb person, you know that. And that is very disrespectful to your own country folk. You lie to their face. And that I cannot respect. Mayor, you do the same thing, the thing, the ordinance that was passed about the mayor's office, not your office, the mayor's office. Unless you think you're gonna be mayor forever, is to protect the employees from being able to operate objectively and free. We're not always gonna be here this council. We're not always gonna be here this council. We're gonna come and council is gonna come and go, mayors are gonna come and go. It's the mayor office. Not tree toes office. Okay, and you to go in the Vietnamese media and totally lie about that. There's a council chamber building. That has. Council member office. And in the past, the mayor office was in there as well. But I'm sure you don't say that to your community members. Your office is simply. The office of the mayor and the office of the council will all be in the same building. If we had a building. That had wings, different wings on the building where there were separation. Uh different levels, different floors. The council and mayor office would be. In a separate part of the building. Where it's not. Interaction and together with staff. And you know that. But you go and tell your community something completely different. Like I said before, and I'm telling you this. This policy that we created was for the community and for the employees. And it absolutely, absolutely had nothing to do with one particular person or another on this council. Where you completely spin the truth. To your community. And that, again, cannot respect.
Mr. Momento, you really disappointed me. I mean, like, I'm not sure that you pretend to speak the truth or you. Doesn't understand it or you don't understand the truth. Let me explain to you. And I was said that my office, I said that the mayor office. Was vote. To be separate from the city hall. And you mentioned about council member.
That's a lie, that is not what you say.
Come on, let me explain. Come on, I'm speaking. The council, the council champ- the council chamber building right now. Has only four council member offices. I, the mayor office. Has been assigned a city hall. Long time before I even become elected mayor. I said that the mayor office. Was vote to be separate from the city hall. Issue right now, the council chamber has only four offices. For four council members. That's a true. And you cannot argue. Any other, you know? So. I'm not sure that you pretend to speak the truth, you all, you know, and I mean, if we continue to the. If we continue to debate and discuss about this item, I don't mind. But we go to end up in the in the next several hours. So I mean, if you guys want to come up with any motion, so be it. And you know, we move to another item. Alright, so uh is it is that a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Okay.
So what's that, clarify the motion? There is, there is opportunity for censure. That is in the, that is.
Uh censures uh vice mayor win and remove him from the vice mayor position.
I, we would have to, that that is something in the code.
You've been a customer for two years, this item is not on agenda.
Just to be clear, a a motion for censure is a is a motion to express strong disapproval. Uh of of an action and then. You as part of that, you may want to agendize this, that action to come back. Their agenda, but so you, there is opportunity for censure here.
Make a motion to remove his title as a vice mayor, I just remind you many time. City manager.
So we do this every December, so the next meeting, the December eighth meeting. It's going to be on the agenda for reorganization anyway.
That's the reason why I ask customer though, how long you been on the council?
Hey, hey, listen. You know. Yes, you are career politician, everybody know that, you depends on this, okay, we get it, okay? I understand that, you don't have to insult me. It's a form of the center, it's a center, it doesn't matter next week, next month, we're gonna uh. Appoint another person to be the vice mayor. Uh to me, we have to send a strong message to any of the member in this uh council that. You have to act civilly. I mean, you know, I've been on this council, I've been fighting, I've been arguing. Okay, I've been saying such strong words, but I never crossed the line. I use logic. Fact. Argument. I don't attack. I don't go on the uh uh on the Vietnamese media and lies and lies and create so much turmoil in this community. That's a crime, you know that, right? Crime of humanity to go out there and create so much lies. And stirring up the 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 peace, this peaceful community who was a. Full of law-abiding citizen who just wanna. Make a living, go home, take care of families, they don't wanna deal with all the untrue turmoil. Drama in the city of Westminster, especially the the Vietnamese elected official, they don't want that, they don't want peace. But every time they turn on the Vietnamese media, what do they hear? All the lies that you, the mayor and the vice mayor spill into the community and that is not acceptable. You said to the council, that's my motion.
I sec- second that motion.
Alright, so we have the motion and uh second to uh censure the vice mayor.
Councilmember Doe.
Right?
Yes.
No, but that is not a complete motion, right? Is your com- what is your complete motion? Doesn't sound like a complete motion.
Yeah, it may be helpful to clarify what the censure is for.
The censure is for. To uh based on the um. Conduct and become stated during the uh um. Presented uh doing this uh agen- agenda that's uh pretending to. Uh vice mayor win, I uh make a motion to the city council to uh. Consider to uh formal censure to remove uh the title of vice mayor from uh vice mayor win. Is that a complete uh motion? Uh Christian?
I think if I understand it. The intent is to censure him based on comments that were. Made uh as have been discussed the night. That that you found unacceptable and I think. I think some have indicated were unbecoming of the office. Yeah, he uh. Yeah, I think that would be, you know, to censure him for those comments, I think that probably. Is what I'm hearing. I don't want to make the motion myself, but.
If the mayors has been uh in personal email call to the community. Council um member Carlos uh.
Because we would know, I never sent to eat any email, please.
It wasn't, there was an email that I uh.
I sent an email?
Yes, in a in a form of email to the uh chain email to the community and and someone have happened to forward to me and I read that.
Any email?
I'm talking about a vice mayor, not you. Calling council member uh Hall uh in the last meeting, uh you hang, I mean, you coward. Now, given that uh she initiate the uh first negative negative comment, but used as a. Uh vice mayor, you you should not respond in a public uh meeting. It's uh it's has been on the Vietnamese media. Telling untruthful uh information about uh the city council and personally attacked it. Other council member uh by s- um spilling lies. That we uh that uh council member conspired, gang up and attack and. And uh kicking the mayor out his off- his office, uh which is not true, he's still in his office.
I mean, before I call for a question, I I told it is agree with customer though statement. I mean, like, we all aware that last meeting was really tension. And customer whole initiate some kind of language, really insult the vice mayor and the vice mayor respond. So I mean, are you, you not? Fair to the vice mayor. Two member of council, when they completely, you know, in attention. They use, you know, like type inappropriate language and I I and I honestly, I don't want to repeat. But how can you only, you know, against a vice mayor? As an elected official, even that, hey, you never lie to vice mayor, that's okay. That's in my nature. Even that you. Have majority vote to censor the vice mayor. But I mean, at a committee out there, they see it. So I mean, like. I do not agree with your sense of the vice mayor, it totally unfair and I want to set that for a record. Okay, so I call for a question. If the vice mayor wouldn't want to say anything? Vice mayor, you want to say anything before I call?
I I just want to say that whatever I said earlier. Whatever I said earlier is what I also, you know, said in the in the in the um. In media, because I'm saying the truth. Okay, the truth is when we are voting to move the office of the mayor. Out of the city hall. When we vote for it, normally it take effective right away. And because it's take effective and we don't have any plan for him to have an office anywhere. That's unplanned for. What's wrong with it? I am saying in front of you, I'm not, I'm not going out there and saying any, you know, behind your back. So, you know, here we are and as far as, you know, um about. The comment from 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 uh, you know, back to the council member Hall. She is the one who call me, you know, you know what she call me. And I I can't even to use the word that she call me. And I use the word you. Okay? Well, e- e- enough for your, you know. I I think, I think the mayor said enough, I don't have to say anything, so go ahead and 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 call for the vote.
I just wanna say, okay, so first of all, I'd like to say that uh we, you know, I really don't appreciate the lies. The number one lie that you just so told here blatantly is that we. Have no place for him to go and that was, that's really not true. We did have at least council member Doe offering his office. And that's on video and that was uh at our meeting. So it was and Mister and also council member Monzo offering his office, so it's. It's really not, like I said, I mean, that's two offices out of four that he could choose from. So why do I hear him saying that he's out in the streets and that he's like homeless and? And you know, that's just not, you know, that's blatant lie. So we we never said we're gonna throw him out and we have no place for him, so. I don't understand why that that is being said, you even said that tonight. Okay, and and then, so that's the one point I want to make, the second point is, back in September. I I think it was council member Doe brought brought the agenda up. To remove you, to remove you as vice mayor. And I myself wanted you to have an opportunity to have a chance. To make amends and to continue to serve. You know, under that title until you term out or until the end of the term, until the end of the year. When we usually um go through a process of um. Another um selection process. But the the thing is, you went out in the media and you said, I wanted your seat. So I I don't understand, you know, I wanted to remove you. You know, the three wanted to remove you because Kimberly Hall want your seat. And that I just didn't get, so I don't understand why those lies are being told. So I can only tell you that there, I can vouch for the fact that there are so many lies. And and it's really getting to the community, there's, they're really so confused and I believe that's very, very irresponsible. So. You know, um and then regarding the monument. That's that's another lie when you say that, you know, I want to kill that whole monument. You know, want to bury the dead and they're already dead, but you have to say that I wanna bury them. To get the community all rile up, get them all upset. When you already know that all I wanted your team to do is to sit down with the veterans. Out of respect for them. And so what did you do as a leader of the community? You chose to put our faces all over the, you know, U-Haul truck and drove it around. So you know, you're being judged in the in the community, I mean, I don't have to judge you. But I'm I'm just saying that, could you please? You know, be more civil, you know, after all, you know, there are kids out there, young adults out there looking up to us. Uh as community leaders, if we could like try to be more civilized and not tell lies. Um and and be more respectful. And you know, especially as a as a vice mayor, you're wearing that title, so tonight we're talking about that, we're talking about you. And I believe this is council member Doe's um agenda, so. I I'm all in support of that, why? Because I gave you a chance back in September. Okay, I know we're we're just one more meeting away from December. But I don't think this can wait because this is becoming an embarrassment to our council. And we can't be represented by a vice mayor who talks like that and act like that. So I support.
So do whatever you need to do uh. Because I I need to respond to her, she accusing me. You accusing me for putting your face there.
I listen, I I I made a statement, I made a statement, okay?
Attorney, we had a motion for a question.
Don't don't try to run away when you accuse somebody and you don't have the evidence.
Ask council member, please, please come down, okay, so.
This is to call the question.
Yeah, okay, motion and second, okay, so uh. We already have the roll call or something? Okay, please.
Who second that called question?
Okay.
Yeah. This is to. Go ahead.
That was a motion made by mayor Tom, second by council member Monzo, that was to call to question, council member Doe.
This is for to to vote, to cover questions or to vote?
It's to stop the debate and vote them. So it'll be two votes.
Councilmember Hope?
Yes.
Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Vice mayor Win?
Yes.
And mayor Ta?
No.
That motion carried four to one with mayor Ta voting no.
So the motion to go. To go to censor the vice mayor, right?
No.
What is the motion about? I'm sorry. Oh, call for a question, yes, okay, I'm sorry, yes. Yes.
So many motion, I'm sorry. So five vote to call for a question, yes, okay. Because so many motion. Yeah. So
Okay.
You call five vote.
That motion carried five zero.
Okay. So now we have the motion, the original motion on the floor, okay?
And that was a motion made by council member Doe and a second by council member Monzo, and that was to censor vice or annoyance comments made on the media council meetings. Council member Doe?
Is very fortunate that we have to go to this point. Um, yes.
But but did you want to add the removal of the the mayor, uh vice mayor?
What?
I I thought it was included, right?
No, I didn't hear that.
You can You can include whatever you want into the motion. I'm just saying it's it will not be effective, because this, that is something in the municipal code. In that we should agendize that specifically, because there is process for removal. So you can include that if you like, but
Yes. So this will go on the next uh next meeting?
Yes, we could bring that at next meeting. So that's that's the motion to bring it back. Okay. Is that, the second is okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion was to censor the censor the vice man wins comments and agendize the removal of the vice man of the vice mayor title, vice man win. Okay, so council member Doe?
Yes.
Council member Ho?
Yes.
Council member Monzo?
Yes.
Vice man Win?
No.
And mayor Ta?
No.
That motion carried three two with vice man win and mayor Ta voting.
All right, next item. Uh, oh, it's over midnight, so do we make, do we need to make any motion or come up with any policy? Right now it's over midnight.
Yes, I would recommend that you you make a motion if you want to keep going. You may wanna set a time limit and finish by a certain time.
So, you know, so you want to, you know, you want to, you know, to, you know, defer for the next meeting, because, you know, there are few items going to, you know, discuss, you know, take a few hours, that one, I think.
So I would, I would just recommend though. I would just recommend though, um if that we do proceed with point one and six point two, because we do have uh timelines, we wouldn't legally bring this back the next week. But the rest, you're more than welcome to continue.
So
I made a motion to approve six point one.
Six point one of the resolution reaffirming proclamation number twenty. Uh, that's number one and resolution number four nine eight three would declare the system of the local emergency. Okay, so we have motion and second for this item, six point one.
Okay, that was a motion made by council member Ho and second by council member Doe. And that was to adopt a resolution entitled a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster reaffirming proclamation number twenty twenty dash zero one and resolution number forty nine eighty three, which declared the existence of a local emergency. Council member Doe?
Yes.
Council member Ho?
Yes.
Council member Monzo?
Yes.
Vice man Win?
Yes.
And mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
Six point two resolution to continue authorizing the conduct of remote uh telephonic meetings during a state of emergency. I move as recommended.
I move to, I move to approve, but I'd like to adopt uh, or actually, I'd like to return. I move to return uh back in person, January twenty twenty two.
Second.
All right.
So the first meeting in January, January should be in person. Is that correct?
Yes, adopt first December, but then back in person, January twenty two.
All right.
So that was, that was a motion made by council member Ho and second by council member Doe. That was to adopt a resolution entitled a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, making the legal required findings to continue to authorize the conduct of remote telephonic meetings during the state of emergency.
I'd like to ask uh, the council, I'd like to ask the mayor if we could please move um seven point one, could we also complete seven point one? That's my appointment for planning commission. I believe we need to fill that if possible. It's a quick one.
Second.
I I would think that um, you know, I would think that we uh we only have a few more to go, so
Really, the rest really gonna take a couple of hours. So this is just a quick one.
We still need a vote on six point two, though.
Six point two, please.
So council member Doe?
Yes.
Council member Ho?
Yes.
Council member Monzo?
Yes.
Vice man Win?
Yes.
And mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
So mayor and council, what I would suggest is that you make a motion right now as to what you're gonna do, because you're going past midnight, so.
That I want, you know, the rest of the item going to be discussed for the next uh council meeting, because it 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 will take some time, and you know, I I have to show my respect to all the member of council. If they want to speak, I have to allow them to speak, yes.
But I agree with that.
And can can we set up a special meeting to deal with it? So that we don't have to be overwhelmed the next uh council meeting?
You know, next week or the week after is like holiday, and you know, I think that it is not hurry, you know, why don't we discuss for the next meeting? Because it's not like, you know, like emergency. That's what I think. All right, so I make a motion to defer the rest of the item to the next city council meeting.
I second that. I like, I like modify the motion to uh to have the um um planning commission appointment going forward.
My second.
Well, okay, if that's, if that's the case, then I want to make a substitution motion to because seven point one is going to appoint planning commission, then I I'd like to uh make a motion with seven point one and seven point two, because it's also a planning commission related.
Also, city council, it is not hurry, so why don't we wait? Because, you know, two item relate to each other. Or talking about planning commission, I I think that I mean, like, it would be fair. So why don't we, if if it was not like emergency, you know, please. You know, I like to defer the rest of the item of agenda to the next meeting. It's not emergency. So please, I just ask, please.
Well, yeah, it's appointment as a vacant, right? I mean, it's just nominate whoever
I may, I asked that from now until the uh until the next council meeting, do we have the planning commission? I'm really fair, please respond. From now until the next meeting, the council have to appoint whatever. Is there, is there a planning commission?
Their planning commission meeting?
Meeting.
Yes.
Coming up?
Uh huh.
I don't know that off the top of my head. I will defer to Debbie.
Um, we are not having a planning commission meeting uh the in next week, uh but I have to look at the calendar. I think there is one at the beginning of of December, the week of uh December first.
Yes, Debbie, that's correct. I'm scheduled to be at the planning commission on December first at six thirty P M.
Okay, you know, you, yeah, I think I think that appointment is a pretty straightforward. Uh whoever nominate, and then this council just approve or disapprove. Then the removal, the remove are gonna be lengthy discussions. You know, just to be fair, so it's gonna probably take a good hour at least to to talk about for five, five members to go through it, so. Just uh so that to support the planning commission to have a full body, I would um I would sit uh recommend that we uh go forward at a point. It's gonna take a couple of minutes.
So we have a motion is
First, we need to motion that we move that item forward, correct?
Okay.
So, okay.
That was, that was the motion. The motion was to move that one item forward. It was seconded by council member Ho. And then to defer the rest of the agenda.
Okay.
So I I, so I actually, so I actually have the motion on the floor right now was for mayor Ta and then seconded by vice mayor to defer to the next meeting. So did we have a substitute? So we had a substitute. Okay, so we're voting on the substitute then.
I I I'd like to make a substitute motion.
No, you you already have the, we already have a substitute. Council member Ho's motion is the substitute.
But then I can't do the the substitute motion?
Not until, not until we get rid of the original substitute. We vote, we need to vote on that substitute motion. That's on the floor.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, there was a second already.
All right.
It it was you actually seconded the motion, I heard.
So it was councilman uh Doe made the substitute, and I seconded it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have the substitute motion on the floor.
Okay, so council member Doe?
Yes.
Council member Ho?
Yes.
Council member Monzo?
Yes.
Vice man Win?
Yes.
And mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
All right, so
Okay.
The rest of the item will go to
No, 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 no. Now, now is my turn to make a substitute motion to uh uh No, 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 the the motion was to have the seven point one. Now my motion is to discuss the seven point two. However you wanna vote, is up to you, but because of a planning commission related, so I am making a motion to have seven point two to be discussed tonight.
Okay, so hold on, uh let me go step by step, and the city attorney, uh I need your help. So basically, the motion
Let me be clear.
Okay, the motion make my council member Doe to move the seven point one forward. That's the first step. Am I right?
Yeah, what what was decided in the way the motion was phrased was that they were gonna defer all the other items and only move forward item seven point one. So the motion that's already been approved
Okay.
was to defer all of them, except that one item.
Uh, city attorney, um there's only the midnight timeframe is still not in effect.
Yeah.
Well, that that was part of the motion that that this, this one item was the only one that would be considered, and then the rest would
Then I, then
You is that midnight ordinance timeframe to end council meetings is not in effect yet.
Technically, you're correct.
What?
At two reading thirty days.
Okay, really, okay.
Yeah.
So it's up to the council?
But right now, we're, there's been a motion to defer the rest of the items, except for the one item, seven point one.
All right.
This is only supposed to take just a minute, one minute. Okay, on seven point one, appointment of the planning commission. All we would do, I'd like to appoint um Terry Nguyen. The planning commission, Terry Nguyen.
Second.
So that was a motion made by council member Ho and second by council member Doe, and that was to appoint Terry Nguyen to serve on the planning commission for the remainder of an existing term expiring November twenty twenty two. Council member Doe?
Yes.
Council member Ho?
Yes.
Council member Monzo?
Yes.
Vice man Win?
Yes.
And mayor Ta?
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
All right, so with that, how we have comments with council agency member eluding A B one, two, three, four report when required. I hope that, you know, if we want to make any statement, please be really, we, because it
Yes, um, okay, tomorrow's Veterans Day. I'd like to wish all the veterans, like to thank them for their service. And um you know, for those who sacrificed me, the ultimate sacrifice, I pray for you and thank you for for sacrificing yourself for
All right.
We have, and the other thing I'd like to say is that I would like to agendize, um um I it's supposed to be on the agenda this uh for this meeting, but I believe our that we have some miscommunication between myself and the interim city manager's office. And what I'd like to do is um, you know, um, I heard in the media um about us, a couple of sales of something, something similar to the sale of uh Liberty Park in two thousand fourteen. And it really raised a concern. And so I think um uh I'd like to, what I would like to do is to request to agendize, so I could direct staff on um maybe doing an audit or somehow pulling any previous sales in the last fifteen years of any city resources, re- uh real estate, and that would include land, raw land, et cetera. So I I mean, I'm, I would take any ideas from you. I'd like you to narrow that down. Uh, so to, you know, I don't know how how involved that is, but at this time, I just wanna agendize it so that it doesn't get missed. Since we only have one more meeting coming.
You said that was fifteen years?
Yeah, fifteen years. Thank you.
Is that uh is that just lane only or the the city?
Any, any real estate dealings and and that includes raw land.
And buildings, right?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Right, so any other council member?
Yes, uh, thank you, mayor, and um, yeah, again, I also wanna thank all the veterans out there for your contribution to our your sacrifice for our country, give us freedom. Um, wish you well and just thank you very much. Uh, I'd just like to thank the staff for all your help and um council as well. Thank you.
All right, any other council member?
Yes, I uh I want to welcome um, you know, yeah, um the interim uh planning director, uh also the police chief. Um, and also the interim uh city uh city clerk. Um, thank you for uh being here with us, and hopefully that you uh, we all can um work to move this city forward. Um, I appreciate that, uh, you know, uh for those who um been in the la- the roles and responsibility, uh even though they are not here or they are not in that roles, but I would uh appreciate for um their effort and um, you know, for their dedication. And welcome to the new uh comers, and hopefully that uh we can work together to move the city forward again. Thank you.
Any other council member?
Um, I would like to uh take the opportunity to welcome the uh community development director, Deborah Corida, did I say correctly, Corida? And uh um city clerk, interim city clerk Lucy Colombo and chief Darren Lanyer. Uh, welcome to the city of Westminster and looking forward to work with you. Um, um, we need your leadership to uh help our city move forward. Uh massive change uh in uh policy and all that stuff, so very grateful. Um uh Veteran Day tomorrow, so um to wanna reach out and uh uh thank you all the veteran that who um sacrifice uh to serve our uh country. Uh, thank you, and uh so wanna thank uh city staff. Thank you for your hard work. Uh, thank you, so city council. And uh, you know, I just wanna take this opportunity to uh reach out each and every one of you in the city council. Uh, this this city, this town have seen, they've been torn apart for the past few years. Um, by who you, we already know, so um, I'm just asking you to, you know, stop, stop the bleeding, stop destroying our community. Um you know, the the people suffer enough. you know, the, the people suffer enough, so please be careful what you're saying. Okay, you know, the, the hardest thing in life is getting elected, okay? It's a, you know, but, but do it with integrity. Do it with honor. Don't do it with lying hatreds. Thank you.
All right, so, uh, I wanna thanks members of the council for being really patient in, you know, over midnight. And we still have a lot of, a few items that we're going to discuss for the next meeting. I sincerely, uh, thanks our interim city manager in a short period of time that she would be able to hire department head, uh, for city clerk department and community development department. I would want to, uh, I want to thank you for it. And I mean it, interim city manager, that's a lot of work, but you, uh, uh, but you really make my day, I mean, like, so you really fulfill your commitment to make sure that, uh, we have a leadership in every single department. I want to, I wanna thank you for it. And, uh, I wanna thanks all the members of the council to, uh, uh, show that you really care for our veterans. I want to enjoy you for that, you know, I, uh, we always, you know, all five of us, we always honor the sacrifices of our, of our, of our men and women. I hope that next year that our, our, our city council could have like a small event to honor our veterans because, you know, we in, we still in pandemic uh, for the last two years. So, um, with that, uh, the next, uh, city council meeting will be on Wednesday, December eight, twenty twenty one at seven P M. Meeting adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.